Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of January the 23rd, 2024. Calling the meeting to order, roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. And if those that can, if you would rise and Councilmember Hamilton will lead us in the pledge, please.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Item four is public comments for items not on the agenda. I do know that there are 20-plus speakers, so I'm going to ask that we all keep it to two minutes. And I understand that thanks to someone was trying to help facilitate that, and so Justin, thank you. And so with that, we will begin the speaker cards. We might call up a few, kind of, if you remember, similar to last time, so we have some behind each other. And again, I would just ask for the respect to allow everybody to have their full comments made without interruption. And like last time, if we would just be respectful of all speakers and allowing that opportunity, no clapping, jeering, et cetera. Thank you. City Clerk?
First speakers are Jamal Katut, Russell Lee, Norma, Elaine Tano, Matt Jones, and Isid Al Otaat.
Counsel, I want to thank Tom and Marty for having the backbone and basic human decency for supporting the ceasefire resolution. Rico, Michael, and Sandy, you were on the wrong side of history. Michael, you're a coward. Despite telling us you believed in our cause, you came up with some lame excuse about how it wasn't your job to vote yes and stayed silent on Friday. Yet it was you who brought up raising the Ukrainian flag for the second time. Rico, you are also a coward. Friday, after a two-hour meeting, you, after a two-hour meeting, admitting to only hearing personally from five people who opposed it, your excuse for not supporting it was ridiculous. Then telling me you'd give us a proclamation instead. We can't be bought off or silenced with that. We had three weeks to mobilize for the last meeting. Imagine what we're going to accomplish by November. Hope those five you sided with vote for you because there are hundreds of us mobilizing against you right now. Pack your bags, we're coming for your seat. Sandy, there's an Arab word for you, it's zatmeh. Look it up. The only thing temporary is your counsel career. You should do this town a favor and resign. You're embarrassing yourself. Your willful ignorance is no excuse. Do your damn job. You met with no one, you returned no one's emails, you did zero research. You're absolutely shameful.
Okay, folks, folks, as a reminder, when the speaker's speaking, please don't have outbursts in the audience. Let the speaker start and finish. And I would ask at the end, yes, we can all applaud and what have you, but let's keep the same from the start to finish. I would appreciate it. Next, please. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Russell, and I'm here again to amplify the cause of your Palestinian community. As many people in this room, I found it outrageous that you would reject the direct cause from your constituents to pass a resolution in support of stopping the genocide happening in their homeland. I want to single out Mayor Rico Medina for a second because I find his excuse for voting no ridiculous. To say that you won't take a side on a federal foreign policy issue when cities like yours are able to support raising the Ukrainian flag as an act of solidarity is outrageous. Why are you choosing now to take this stance? After hearing your hundreds of your, hearing hundreds of your constituents plead to you, after cheering on the children who are speaking on behalf of the children experiencing a genocide in Gaza, why did you choose now to take a stance of neutrality? Flying the Ukrainian flag twice was an endorsement of US foreign policy to aid the Ukrainians, is it not? Since you obviously did not raise the Russian flag, the genocide in Palestine is not a both-sides issue, just like the invasion of Ukraine is not a both-sides issue. But if you were to put it in those terms, you chose a side, and you're choosing the side of the oppressor by refusing to take the side of the oppressed. The least you can do is change your mind and vote yes to agendize a resolution and pass it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, San Bruno City Council. My name is Norma Karza. I'm here today to let you know how disgusted we are with your lack of compassion towards humanity. At the previous council meeting, the community was not asking you to resolve the Middle East crisis. What we are asking is for you to do what's right by humanity. Cease fire, release all hostages, provide humanitarian aid on both sides unconditionally. Mr. Medina, Rico, we are so disappointed in you. You have been supported by us for a long time, and you have definitely lost that support. Ms. Alvarez, the fact that you think this is temporary situation, when in fact it's been going for many years, shows your ignorance. Four percent of the Palestinian population have been killed in the last hundred days, and in comparison, that is 13 million American citizens. This is not temporary situation. Your ignorance of the subject at hand is evident. Such ignorance should not and cannot be tolerated. You are an embarrassment to yourself, to the seat that you represent, and you should resign. Thank you.
Next speakers, please. All right. Next speakers. Please go ahead when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Elaine Tano. I'm a member of Anok Bayan Daily City. We are a grassroots organization of Filipino youth and students organizing for national democracy in the Philippines, and several of our members are Skyline students or San Bruno residents. On Tuesday, January 9th, Anok Bayan Daily City members attended the San Bruno City Council meeting to support agendizing a ceasefire resolution. We are deeply disappointed by the decision not to agendize the resolution, and we join the San Bruno community in condemning the city council's refusal to heed the demands and interests of their constituents and their failure to truly act as the city with a heart. Anok Bayan Daily City stands in solidarity with our Palestinian siblings and with the Palestinian struggle for liberation, which remains intrinsically tied to the Filipino struggle for liberation. The fascist Philippine government, which has also targeted human rights offenders and progressive journalists, is the third-largest buyer of Israeli weapons from 2018 to 2022. And when dozens of our Filipino and Filipino-Palestinian domestic workers in Gaza were stuck under Israel's inhumane bombardment, the Philippine government failed to provide adequate and timely support to return our Anok Bayan home. Even here in the US, our dollars, our tax dollars fund both the repressive Philippines National Police and Israel. It's clear that the struggle for a free Palestine is a struggle for freedom and peace everywhere. And as freedom-loving Filipinos, we again condemn the city council's dismissal of the people's demands, and we join the many brave and principled community members in demanding an immediate and permanent ceasefire and an end to occupation from Palestine to the Philippines. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next list of speakers, please.
Hello, my name is Matt Jones, graduate of San Bruno Public Schools and a former city planner for the city with a heart, City of San Bruno. I was raised as a Presbyterian, and I was taught to love my neighbor. I'm here because of the moral urgency of the crisis we face in Gaza. It's a conflict that directly affects so many members of this community. According to the organization Oxfam, 250 people a day are dying each day in Gaza, the highest rate of death of any conflict in the 21st century. The last council meeting, I submitted comments before this body in favor of a ceasefire. I watched on Zoom as I heard over 120 members of this community speak. We heard from doctors, teachers, small business owners, children, so many who live, work, study, and serve this community. My heart broke with every story I heard of a San Brunin who lost family members and doesn't know how many more they might lose, every day wondering the fate of their relatives in the long run, if there will even be a Palestine left if the killing continues at this rate. It's horrific. And I have to ask, how often do these folks from this community show up to council with a request? How often is a meeting this packed? I think about some of the business owners in our downtown that are part of the community that are affected by this conflict. The owners of Mazra, which Yelp designated a top 100 restaurant in the country, brings significant business to this community. We owe them our gratitude. Grand Leader Market, which provides food to needy families every holiday season for free. They help you, and now they're asking for your help, and you're turning your back on them? You say you don't want to wade into international affairs. Well, guess what? You raised the Ukrainian flag twice. You sent supplies to Tonga after their earthquake in solidarity with the Pacific Islander community here. But now when this hard-working community that pays their taxes and serves and brings business to this community finally asks you for something, you won't take action. I thought you represented the city with a heart, and I guess you don't. Marty Medina and Tom Hamilton, thank you. Alvarez, Salazar, and Medina, I urge you, bring a ceasefire resolution to an agenda and vote yes at the next meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, next list of speakers, please. City Clerk? Next list of speakers, please, City Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the line. I apologize. Whenever you're ready.
Greetings, council members. I come to you so dismayed and disappointed in you, Mayor Salazar and Mayor San, or Councilmember Sandra. It seems to me that we are not San Bruno, the city with the heart, with your cold, calculating, callousness towards the people suffering in Palestine. Israel hasn't even existed since 1948. They're now occupying Palestine, and the people of Palestine are suffering and dying and being killed. And I cannot understand how you can support Ukraine and not support the people suffering in the Middle East. You have so many Palestinian members of the community that support a ceasefire and that support the hostages being released. How you could vote against this, it boggles my mind. But I will never vote for you ever again, Mayor Medina. That is how disappointed I am. And I make a community motion for Councilmember Salazar to retake the issue so that you can vote, because it's very well played that you would act sick when you were seen at San Bruno Park, walking your dog, and then San Bruno Bart, waiting for your wife to be picked up. Is it BDS? That is the reason why you're voting against this? To boycott and divest and sanction to avoid that against Israel? Or are you like Mitch McConnell, where your lip service is empty with your hollow thoughts and prayers? How dare you come to the prayer vigil and not even, your prayers are empty. It's hollow. And so this is what it is. You do not stand against hate. That is BS. Bullcrap. So I urge you, Councilmember Salazar, to bring it up, because this city with a heart is empty, cold, and ice. You have no love, no compassion, no consideration for the people who urge you to vote in favor of making a stand. And we demand ceasefire, or you resign, or you will never get the support of the community.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Next list of speakers, please. Thank you.
I'm Musa. Can I start? Okay, cool. Hi, I'm Musa from CARE, the Council on American Islamic Relations. We urge the city of San Bruno to reintroduce the ceasefire resolution and pass it in step with the demands of the majority of this community. Why is it so hard for this council to acknowledge the deep pain of the Palestinian community in San Bruno who have lost many members of their families? Is Palestinian blood cheap to you? 30,000 Palestinians in Gaza are dead, nearly half of them being children. You know this. The fact that you all sit and listen to this yet sit idly by calls into question your humanity. The resolution simply calls for an immediate and bilateral ceasefire, humanitarian aid to Gaza, and the release of all hostages. It's simple, clear, and non-divisive. According to recent polling by Data for Progress, a majority of voters think that the US should call for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza and prioritize diplomacy. Americans are more likely to back candidates who support a ceasefire. Come March, your community won't forget that you lost your humanity, and they will exercise their constitutional right to vote and place people into office who adequately represent their voices. You're worried about division? Genocide is divisive. Opposing genocide is united call against violence. Israel has dropped almost 30,000 bombs and shells on Gaza in 100 days, eight times more than the US aimed at Iraq in six years of war. This is the bare minimum ask from your community for a resolution that acknowledges Palestinian lives lost and calling for a ceasefire to end the bloodshed of innocent men, women, and children. So we urge you to reintroduce and pass the ceasefire resolution, because it is a non-divisive, basic call for humanity and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, San Council. My name is Devonte, and I'm here to support the ceasefire resolution. Last time, I was really disappointed when I heard that it was a tie and that one of y'all was sick and didn't show up, and therefore it wasn't going to be put on the future agenda. That wasn't okay. And as I said last time, you're all here to support the community of San Bruno, and there's a Palestinian community here that I don't see any solidarity from y'all. And that needs to change, because your solidarity, you're all here in power, right? In terms of your positions, you serve the community, you serve the city of San Bruno, and you need to serve the Palestinian community here. What's going on over in Gaza is affecting Palestinian folks here and the folks over there. Folks have lost their lives. They're going through starvation. They can't even find, a lot of folks are missing, can't even find their bodies. They have no water. They have no internet. They don't have anything, the basic needs that they need to survive. This isn't okay, and this isn't wrong. And this is, this is terrible. We're asking you, we're demanding you as a community to do the right thing, to be on the right side of justice. Being silent, ignoring the community, ignoring our voices, is not, we're not going to tolerate that. We're going to keep showing up. This is how we show our solidarity, and this is how we resist. Need you all to be on the right side of justice and do your job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Folks, excuse me. Please, oh, no, please. During the speaker, please, no comments from the audience. Let the speaker be heard from start to finish. And, no, no, I was referring to somebody else. But no, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Well, I'm here on behalf of my parents, lifetime San Bruno resident, small business owners. I show them what their tax dollars are funding, the genocide their tax dollars are funding every day, and it makes them sick. And I'm sure it makes you sick, too. You know, they vote. They vote. And when November comes around, they're going to remember whether you called for a ceasefire or not. And, you know, it's really the bare minimum, a ceasefire. It's sort of middle-of-the-road, really easy. And if you can't even call for a ceasefire, what can you do? So.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm here also on behalf of my parents to urge you to pass a ceasefire resolution. San Bruno calls itself the city with a heart, but a city with a heart would not sit and twiddle its thumbs for 109 days or shrug while a genocide is taking place. Demonstrate a kernel of leadership and integrity and call for a ceasefire. This shouldn't be difficult or controversial. I don't think that we need to intellectualize something that is so clear on its face to be inhumane and counterintuitive. Violence and starvation does not beget peace. The continued 75-plus years of occupation, blockade, siege, and control of Palestine's territories is proof that violence and oppression do not achieve peace or stability. But if you do want to intellectualize it, Human Rights Watch concluded that the Israeli government has demonstrated an intent to maintain domination of Jewish Israelis and over Palestinians across Israel and the OT, including East Jerusalem. That intent has been coupled with systematic oppression of Palestinians and inhumane acts committed against them. When these three elements occur together, they amount to the crime of apartheid. But Salem says that Israel's regime of apartheid and occupation is inextricably bound up in human rights violations. And then, there are the hundreds of UN Security Council and General Assembly resolutions related to Israel dating back to 1948. But my lifetime begins in the 80s, so I'll start reading from there. 1980, Resolution 465, deplores Israel settlements and asks all member states not to assist Israel's settlement program. There are parallel resolutions in the UN General Assembly. Strongly deplore, 1980, Resolution 467, strongly deplores Israel's military intervention in Lebanon. 1980, Resolution 468, calls for Israel to rescind illegal expulsions of two Palestinian mayors and a judge and to facilitate their return. Resolution 469, strongly deplores Israel's failure to observe the council's order not to deport Palestinians.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Did we, next speakers?
I will now be calling a number of speakers. Mandy, Luna A., Stephanie, Nuha, Amina, Sandy, Amber, Justin, Nicole H., Wendy, Inos, Fayed, Kinda, Wissam, Neda, Mahah, Aleni, Camila, and Gosan.
Whenever you're ready.
To my brothers and sisters in the room behind me, there are going to be multiple speakers giving an elongated speech, so please try not to clap after every speaker so we can deliver our message to the council. On January 9th, the city council voted against agendizing a drafted ceasefire resolution. Over 100 community members, majority of whom are from San Bruno, made an earnest appeal to the council to recognize the resolution as a symbol of peace and humanity. The community members present at the January 9th meeting are lifelong residents, business owners, and students enrolled in the San Bruno School District. They, we, are your constituents. We are the ones who drive these roads every day, who frequent the shops and stores in our downtown area. We are the ones who send our kids to school here, who work here, who live here, who pay taxes here. We do. And all we asked for was that this council recognize and listen to the people that live here.
So the speaker had asked if we, if they can go, continue so that the message.
The ceasefire resolution did not ask the council to recognize Palestinian liberation or sovereignty. The resolution clearly asked the city to acknowledge the inherent injustice of indiscriminate killing of civilians in deprivation of food, water, electricity, and medical aid. This is about principle. The resolution urges the city to think globally by acting locally. War divides people, but humanity should unite them. And what the resolution presented was a call for humanity, a call everyone should be united behind.
Mayor Medina, you stated, despite my personal feelings on this issue, I do not agree that the city of San Bruno should weigh in on federal foreign policy. We need to remain focused on core city and neighborhood services. The city of San Bruno has set a precedent for its involvement in global affairs. Let us remind the council that the city of San Bruno raised the Ukrainian flag at City Hall not once, but twice. This was a decision that the city council voted on unanimously. The flag was a symbol of the city's solidarity with a country that was at war with another country, an army against an army, Russia versus Ukraine. We asked the council, is the war in Ukraine a neighborhood service? Did the council take into consideration the Russian community in San Bruno? No. It simply decided to raise the Ukrainian flag to, as Councilman Salazar stated, show solidarity with the Ukrainian
When this decision was made on March 8th, 2023, Councilmember Salazar stated, I agree. It's a great gesture. Don't know if they will know in Ukraine that little old San Bruno is standing with them, but a lot of other cities are doing it as well. Today, we, the residents of San Bruno, ask that the council consider that raising the Ukrainian flag would be divisive in San Bruno? Let us remind the council that the siege on Gaza is an assault on an unarmed civilian population. According to the Euro Med Human Rights Monitor, 31,497 people have been killed in Gaza as of January 14th. Those, of those killed, 12,345 of them are children. Would you be able to garner the sympathies of this council if these children were Ukrainian? Could you look at me, please? I'm speaking to you. Thank you, Sandy. Sandy. Look up, please. Thank you. When we, when, when we would be able to, would we be able to garner the sympathies of this council if these children were Ukrainian, if these children were white? The double standards and hypocrisy of this racist council is not something that the people of San Bruno will tolerate.
During the city council comment on January 9th, Councilmember Alvarez stated, it's important to understand this crisis is temporary and to stay positive. Temporary? Temporary? San Bruno residents stood at this very podium and testified to having lost relatives in the siege on Gaza. Is the killing of children something we must accept as a society because it is temporary? Councilmember Alvarez, death is permanent. The murdering of children is not something any of us can pause at will, because trust us, if we could, we would. We would have, we would have before a single child was killed. Your callous comment was an insult to the voters in your district, the city of San Bruno as a whole, and to the entire Palestinian population. You will forever be remembered as the elected official who told her constituents that killing of her family is just temporary, and you look at me when I'm talking to you.
All right. Okay. Whenever you're ready. Folks, please, let's give the respect to the speakers.
Councilmember Alvarez gaslighted this community. We were told to accept the catastrophe and cold-blooded murder of our people and loved ones. Some of our community members lost up to 60 family members, and yet we were told to, quote, "stay positive." How dare anyone say to stay positive in light of the death of a single family member, let alone 60? Do you expect this community to tolerate such disrespectful comments from one of our elected officials? We will not, and we will use every legal avenue available to us to ensure that our council reflects our community without having to wait until
A common talking point of those opposed to local ceasefire resolutions is that the demand for a ceasefire is driven by outside influences. The San Bruno community demonstrated that this talking point is false and pure propaganda. Of the 125 speakers, almost 95% were in favor of a ceasefire, and each speaker clearly demonstrated their San Bruno residency and connection. Of the eight speakers opposed, six of those were not even from San Bruno, and they openly stated that. Counsel, we know that emails flooded your inboxes. We ask you, what was the tone of those who opposed the ceasefire? Where were these people from? We already know the answers to these questions, as we've seen the playbook before in numerous council ceasefire discussions. And I'd like to remind you that the kids in Gaza have dreams. Maybe one day they'd like to be like you, but you have to stop the killing first.
The public should note that the JCRC blasts their regional and national membership to oppose these resolutions and provides them with templated emails and talking points filled with propaganda and misinformation. The public should also note that the Mayor Rico Medina and Councilmembers Alvarez and Salazar bowed to the hate-filled emails of outside influences. Mayor Rico, Councilmembers Alvarez and Salazar acquiesced to the pressure of business influences and money rather than the morally correct path and standing for what is just. You say you don't want to divide the community, but it's too late. You and you alone are the sole individuals responsible for that division. You and you alone are the sole individuals responsible for that division.
Whenever you're ready.
What baffles us even more is that Mayor Medina stated that he was willing to sign a proclamation in support of Palestine that did not require council vote, but since a resolution process has been initiated, that the option for a proclamation was long gone. What baffles us even more is that Councilman Salazar told us in meetings that he supports what we're doing and stands with us, but yet cannot bring himself to support the resolution. It has never been clear that our own council doesn't reflect the community who elected them, but rather, they seek to protect their own interests above their constituents. Mayor Rico Medina, we can tell you now that any proclamation you wanted to introduce does not have the community's support. You say a proposed proclamation would be to show support to the Palestinian community. You missed your opportunity to show support for the San Bruno Palestinian community. You drafted a proclamation on your own without consulting the community who met with you, spoke with you, and poured their souls to you in public comment. Therefore, we do not need an empty platitude from someone who made clear that this community does not matter to them. You looked at a room full of your neighbors, community members, and constituents and told them that they did not matter. You should be ashamed.
San Bruno is supposedly the city with a heart, a namesake that San Bruno does not live up to. How can you claim that you are a city with a heart if you do not see the humanity of your own neighbor? The global call for ceasefire is the embodiment of this city's ethos. We are a city that welcomes all people to build a life for themselves. This is evident in our diverse population. Many of our community members fled war, displacement, and poverty and made this sleepy city their home away from home. When we implore this city to acknowledge a ceasefire, it is a call rooted in the belief that San Bruno possesses the capacity to engage in matters that directly impact our community. It is a plea for this city to reflect the compassionate and inclusive values it claims to embody. A ceasefire resolution is only befitting of this city.
Thank you for your comments.
Our leaders continue to look for neutral grounds in these times of despair. Last meeting, council members dismissed our plea for peace while we're back. When we look back collectively on history, we ask ourselves, how could anyone have let this happen? Why didn't anyone do anything to stop this? It was our need for neutrality in 1942 that allowed 8,000 Japanese-Americans to be imprisoned at Tanfran Racetrack, right here in San Bruno. 8,000 innocent souls were ripped away from their homes, businesses, and schools to be imprisoned in horse stalls. The collective silence of our society was complicit in the wrongful imprisonment and dehumanization. The internment of 8,000 innocent lives is a black spot on the collective history of this city. Our city and its inhabitants were complicit in this sin. Do not be complicit in this genocide.
Erecting a monument to remember the event does nothing to undo the fact that we willingly imprisoned children for six months. How do we undo history? How do we rectify moral wrongs? Our answer is simple. We adopt resolutions that communicate moral clarity and stand with humanity. We dismantle systems of oppression that value the lives of some over others. We turn to our leaders in times of darkness for principled thought and action. Let the ceasefire resolution be a new pathway for San Bruno's future in creating a community that is inclusive in spirit and leads with humanity. Let us not default to searching for neutrality when a human tragedy is unfolding before us.
The San Bruno Palestinian community is a touchpoint of the peninsula. Many families settled in San Bruno after immigrating here in the 70s and 80s due to the proximity to SFO. Multi-generational families are common to this day. And even those who have moved still have family ties here and routinely brings them back. We have set up our homes as well as our businesses here. When asked, "Where can I get the Basshawadma sandwich?", the answer is San Bruno. Where can I find a quality Middle Eastern market? The answer is San Bruno. Where can I find a Palestinian attorney, or accountant, or physician? The answer is still San Bruno.
During COVID, our businesses helped keep this city together. Our community members took the shop locals seriously and kept their dollars here, too. We did so with pride because we, too, are San Bruno. Counsel, you are well aware of the Palestinian presence and influence in this city. You know our warmth and hospitality well, as you have been to a number of our restaurants and businesses in San Bruno. We know that you love our food and admire our culture. So how can you love the food we produce but be complicit in the killing of the babies we produce? Let me be clear: inaction is action. By not taking this resolution forward, you have taken a position against us, and we say that your inaction makes you complicit. As Archbishop Desmond Tutu said, and all of you should remember this quote, "When you are silent in times of oppression, you have chosen the side of the oppressor."
12,345 children have been killed. Children! That is 24,690 pairs of hands, 24,690 pairs of feet, gone. Children! 12,345 children have been taken from their parents. 12,345 children have been crumbled underneath rubble! Their crime? What's their crime, you ask? They were born in Gaza. That's their crime. They were born in Gaza. This council says that the death of children is not in their purview. This council says that it cannot weigh in on whether it is right or wrong for a child to be killed. And counting! These numbers are outdated! If these children were Ukrainian, counsel, would that be in your purview to make comment on if these children were Ukrainian? 12,345 children! Shame!
One of the main arguments against supporting the resolution was that it was a divisive issue. Councilmembers, nearly everything you decide on that dais is divisive, something even as simple as parking. In response to parking challenges throughout the city, the city council has implemented measures, including the installation of parking meters and the delegation of ticket distribution to a third party. If this implementation of these meters and how the funds are to be used was a divisive issue, was it not? However, despite the different sentiments within the community, the council displayed the commitment to addressing complex and divisive issues proactively and ended up passing the measure. So when you use the excuse that the city council should stay away from divisive issues, we don't buy it. Again, nearly everything this council decides on is divisive. Shame on you.
Before I continue our collective statement, I would like the whole community to know that last night, when Mayor Salazar... Or not Mayor Salazar, Mayor Rico Medina unwelcomely showed up at our peace vigil, he brought the proclamation, thinking that that was an appropriate time to display and provide this proclamation to us. That's only something a narcissist does. You weren't even welcome there, and you brought the proclamation. We are not going to let you speak while we are praying for our children. I'll continue. An effective city councillor understands the responsibility to lead and take decisive action, even in the face of differing opinions. Saying, "I don't know enough to make a decision," is not an excuse, Sandy. You have had a month to educate yourselves. You had meetings with your community, except for you, Sandy. You willingly chose to ignore us rather than engage with us. So we do not buy your excuses. You had every opportunity to learn, but you chose to ignore us. You should be ashamed of yourself. We stand here before you today with a heavy heart and a deep sense of anger and sadness that permeates our community. We, the residents, had placed our trust in this council, believing that you would act in the best interests of the people you represent. However, your failure to support the community's resolution, calling for a ceasefire, has left us disillusioned and disheartened. It is with profound disappointment that we address you today, not as our representatives, but as individuals who have turned a blind eye to the collective plea for peace and justice.
Our frustration is not merely a reaction to your lack of support, but a response to what we perceive as a failure rooted in racism. The decisions made, or rather neglected, seem to reflect a systemic bias that undermines the very essence of equality and fairness. Our community, diverse and united, deserves better. It deserves leaders who uphold the principles of justice, compassion, and respect for every individual, regardless of their background. As we express our disappointment today, let it be known that we will not sit idly by and tolerate this disregard for our voices. The time for silence has passed, and we stand united in our commitment to hold elected officials accountable.
In closing, I want to make it clear that the residents of this city will not forget the betrayal that we feel today. Mayor Rico, Councilman Salazar, Councilwoman Alvarez, you have lost the trust of this community. And now, we must sever our trust in all of you. We will not be silenced. We will not stop the fight for justice and equality that our community deserves. This is not just a speech. This is a rallying cry for change and a reminder that the power lies with the people. Mayor Rico Medina, Councilman Salazar, and Councilwoman Sandy Alvarez, your actions have clearly not gone unnoticed. By turning your back on this community's resolution, you have turned your back on the people you swore to serve. And now, we have no choice but to turn our backs to you.
City Clerk, do we have other speakers?
I have no other speaker cards.
At this point, seeing no other public comments at this time, we're going to take a few-minute recess so that people who wish to leave can, or those who wish to remain also can. City Council, in recess. City Council, in recess. Okay, we're going to reconvene in the City Council meeting. We are now under Item 5, Announcements and Presentations. The first announcement is Item A. The City of San Bruno was happy to partner with the San Mateo County to offer San, please, folks, so we can conduct the city's business. With the San Mateo County to offer San Bruno Small Business, a Small Business Post-Pandemic Recovery Grant. Visit www.sanbruno.ca.gov/grantinfo to learn more about this program. Item B and C, one is, the Item B is to issue a proclamation recognizing February as Black History Month. Item C is to issue a proclamation recognizing February 10, 2024, as Lunar New Year. We have a presentation from Wings Learning Center, which I'd like to ask Ken to step forward at this time, come to the mic. This is a, as you folks will probably remember, in Rollingwood Elementary, that school had closed. And so, we have new neighbors and partners at that. And Ken is before us, go ahead and tell us about this new good home that they found at Rollingwood Elementary called Wings Learning Center.
Thank you so much. Wings Learning Center was founded in, 20 years ago, and its mission is to enhance the quality of life for individuals with moderate to severe autism and similar learning challenges. We serve children ages 5 to 22. About a year or so ago, we were, our building in Redwood City was sold, and so we were desperately in need of finding a new school property. And thanks to Karen and Tom Hamilton, who made a connection with our board member, we were able to find the Rollingwood School, which was closed, the district closed the school, and then, we then leased some property, some rooms there at the school. We were blessed to have this property. It's a beautiful school. Our students love it, our families love it, our staff love it. And it gives great opportunities for our population to be able to learn, to be able to grow, and be members of the community. We are licensed, certified by the California Department of Education. We offer educational, functional education services, as well as speech pathology, occupational therapy, behavior management, and sensory integration. One of the things that is very important in the lives of people that have developmental disabilities and moderate to severe autism is when they become adults. And so, we've got alumni who, unfortunately, up to this point, we have not had any adult programs. So, when they reach 22 years old, they sometimes go home, they sometimes go to another program, and the resources and opportunities, alternatives are very minimal. So, Wings is planning on offering an adult program. And so, we finally have the ability to be able to cover a lifespan, it's a lifespan of opportunities for our students and their families. When parents get older, it's one of their biggest fears, is what's going to happen to my child. I have an older sister myself, and so, I now take care of that because my parents are gone. And it's a struggle, but it's also an opportunity that we are going to pursue. And we're going to hopefully get our clients, our students, and our adults in the community volunteering, perhaps working, being a part of the community, being active, and being social, and enjoying life in the San Bruno community. What we need going forward is more staff. If anybody knows anybody in special education, I want to talk to them. We're hiring. It's a very tough road to find, recruit and find special education teachers. Our ratios, because we're dealing with such a population like moderate to severe autism, is one-on-one and two-on-one. So, we have teacher and an aide in many cases. So, we're looking feverishly for staff, special education teachers, aides. And so, please, if you know anybody, let me know. We're looking for more students. We have, because there's a pipeline of students, but the issue is always finding staff, so we've got more students than staff. So, we have to constantly have that balance. But fortunately, we've been adding students because we've really worked hard to find staff. So, every time we find staff member, we can add some more students. So, our goal is to, is to serve more students, and we have the capacity there at Rollingwood. We take students from Santa Clara County, San Mateo, Alameda, and San Francisco presently, so we're just not limited only to this area. We're looking for board members, leadership. We're certainly, as a nonprofit school, looking for funding from individuals and corporate matching grants, public and private. I want to thank the council members, all of you, for all your support. We have great partnerships going on with Rotary, with Lions Club, with other organizations in town. The community's been very welcoming to us. Upcoming, we've got the mayor and others attending a ribbon-cutting ceremony on the 31st of January at 1:00, with a reception afterwards. Our students are thrilled, they're excited, they can't wait. Our parents are excited as well. And we have a fundraiser on April 19th to raise funds to support our efforts. We are blessed to have somebody on our, on our board that has graciously offered a $100,000 match, so we're feverishly trying to match those funds to be able to get all the funds that we need going forward. So, invite everybody from the community to tour our school. If you know anybody that's interested in staffing and students, or supporting us in any way, please, please contact us. And thank you so much for such a, such a great welcome to San Bruno community.
Thank you very much, Ken, for being here, and thank you for updating us, and look forward to the 31st. Thank you very, very much. With that, we will move on to Item E, receive update on citywide parking enforcement and downtown metering parking. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I apologize, but in perfect timing, my computer decided to go into a forced update and restart right as I was about to come up here, so I do not have my presentation up. Clerk, are you able to pull that up still? I think I can probably see it well enough to go ahead and do it that way. Okay. I am Ryan Johansson, your Chief of Police. I appreciate a few moments this evening to present to you a brief update on the metered parking program downtown. Could you advance a slide, please? Just to recap what brought us here, the City Council strategic initiative established in the fiscal year 20 and 21 was specifically directed staff to establish a paid parking program downtown and to enhance citywide parking enforcement. And as I've reported numerous times before on this matter, this was based upon a study in 2019 that looked into the various impacted parking problems in the downtown corridor that made recommendations consistent with those here in the strategic initiative from council. Can you advance the slide, please? So, this map has also been shown before in a presentation, but for sake of review, this captures the area that will be impacted by the new metered parking zones. Essentially, you're looking at all of San Mateo Avenue and the downtown corridor between, essentially, the start of the downtown area and all the way to El Camino Real. You also have areas of El Camino Real that have conventionally been timed parking zones that will now be metered parking, and a couple of minor split-offs from the San Mateo Avenue corridor onto side streets that are also part of that zone. Essentially, what this reflects is areas that have always been timed parking restricted to either two hours or five hours, depending upon the zone, are now going to be actually metered. This map is also available on the police department's website under the meter parking update, and you can expand it there and see it a little bit more effectively than you can on my slide here. Next slide, please. So, the paid parking kiosks, many of you have probably seen them starting to go in downtown. I understand that's created a little bit of confusion, I'll talk about that in a moment. But the installation began in November of 2023, sorry for the typo on the slide here. Many of those kiosks are already installed, a few of them are awaiting concrete pads or bollards that need to be installed based upon their specific location, but they are going in. The key point, probably the takeaway from this evening to clarify for the public, is that paid parking is not active at this point in time. You do not need to pay to park in any of these metered parking zones. The kiosks reflect that information. If you try to pay, they won't let you. And if you look at the screen, it will tell you that parking is free. However, we have had some issues with some of the meters not coming online as expected based upon an issue between the solar panels and the batteries, and so those kiosks are blank. And that has created some confusion in the public, where they walk up and see a blank kiosk and can't seem to get the screen to activate. This is an issue we've been working on nonstop over the last 72 hours or so to come to some sort of resolution. We think the initial problem was because the kiosks were bagged in an effort to not create confusion, and that bagging covered the solar panels, which meant the batteries didn't charge and the meters went dead. So, now we have to go power them up and get the solar panels to effectively charge them over time. The parking time limits are still codified, so it's important to understand that while we're not enforcing timed parking down there in a proactive basis, the law still remains that, as per the signage, you can't park in some areas beyond two hours, you can't park in some lots beyond five hours. Again, we are not proactively enforcing this, nor do we have any intention to, but just know that there is no exemption or change in the code or the law that would allow you to park in excess of those timed limits. Another key element here is signage. Signage will be going in that is very clear about what you are expected to do in order to park in the metered zones. This is part of why the kiosks are not yet active, is because the signage is not yet in. There's been a number of delays with the signage, both in the QR codes that need to go on to those signs so that you know how to pay for a given zone, and also in the actual manufacturing of the signs themselves. Those issues have been resolved, and the signs are in production, but the key takeaway here is that we will not go active or live until there is ample signage all over this area explaining to you exactly what you need to do in order to comply with the metered parking. Next slide, please. Another real quick overview of what this will look like initially, so there will be paid parking or metered parking will be required both on the street, in the zones that you saw on the map, and in the off-street city-owned parking lots throughout those same zones. Again, it will be clearly marked with signage. The high-level objective here is to move parking off of the street when it's longer term, so there's greater turnover for the businesses. People are coming and going more quickly, and the longer-term parkers are being incentivized to move into the off-street lots. We're creating that incentive through a change in pricing. So, initially, if you want to park on the street, it'll be $1.50 per hour to park at any, in any of the zones that you saw on the map on the street. And there will be a two-hour limit to that parking, so you can only pay for up to two hours, and when the two hours is up, you need to move your car and go somewhere else. So, this will again, hopefully, create that parking turnover we're looking for to support the businesses, and again, consistent with the report in 2019 that said that was our chief problem here. In the off-street lots, the parking rates will be $1 for two hours, $2 for five, or essentially $3 for the entire day, for 10 hours. Obviously notably cheaper than the rate on the streets, again with the objective of driving longer-term parkers into the lots and creating more open and available parking on the street. The enforcement for this will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the streets, and from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the lots. The reason for the reduced timing in the lots is to allow residents to use the lots after hours to create additional parking in these neighborhoods that have been impacted traditionally for street parking. So, this will formalize an arrangement by which those residents can use these lots, at this point, cost-free in those after-hours times, beginning at 6:00 p.m. and running right through to 8:00 in the morning. Again, after-hours, they'll be available to park in those lots for free, and also, street parking will be free once you hit that 8:00 p.m. timeline, there will no longer be a need to pay to park. Next slide, please. So, there's also a lot of conversation about how this will impact local businesses. I live in an area where metered parking is very common. I can tell you there are no accommodations for businesses or their employees. If you're a business owner and employee, you either pay to park, or you park outside of the metered zone. Council gave quite clear direction to staff that you desired for us to create a better accommodation for business owners here. And what that program looks like as of now, as reported before, is that every physical address within that business corridor will be entitled to two free parking permits. Those will be by license plate, so essentially, the police department will whitelist those license plates, so that they will not be cited for parking and not paying. Essentially, it's like giving you a parking permit. We will make additional permits available to businesses for their employees at a rate of $30 per month per license plate. All of this metering and all of the enforcement is done by license plate, so these will not be permits that you can hang in a car and change from car to car. They will be for a specific vehicle based upon its license plate to park within the metered zones. These permits will only be usable in the lots, they will not allow for parking on the street because that would hinder our ability to create the turnover we're looking for. And there will essentially be a process through the PD through which these business owners or operators will be given the authority to apply for permits for their employees. We're actually testing, as I speak all day today, a potential, much easier way to facilitate this for businesses through a coupon code that businesses would receive, and employees then be able to purchase monthly permits at the discounted rate directly through the kiosks, and would not require this same back-and-forth with the police department that could obviously become a bit laborious over time. That would be something that we could deploy on more of a trial basis. We have a number of mechanisms in place to ensure there's not abuse, and that it is in fact being used by employees, but that is something we're looking into as a potentially better means of providing this benefit to businesses and their, their staff. Those business owners who are listening, you will be hearing from us again very shortly. We'll have the community service officers and our support services officer walk in the downtown to begin queuing up this permitting process with you. So, in terms of what's next, the kiosks are up now, as I said, but they display a clear message that says that parking is free. We've even added some signage to those with a QR code that folks can scan to get more information about where the program's at. Some of the kiosk screens are blank, as I described earlier, but hopefully the signage will mean that that's not so much of an issue moving forward. We are likely to activate metered paid parking sometime in February. The initial goal, if you recall, was January 1. As with most projects, there were a number of inevitable delays between the multiple vendors providing services to get this off the ground. We are looking at hopefully sometime in February. What will happen when that goes on is that the, the kiosks will go live and you'll be expected to pay to park, but we will create a grace period for enforcement and instead be issuing what looks like tickets but are in fact warning notices that have no dollar cost to them, as an effort to get even further outreach to the people who are normally parking in this area that, hey, it is now requiring payment in the future. If you don't pay, you may be subject to getting a citation. So, we'll, we'll look at that grace period as we've done with other new enforcement in the past. Signs will be going in very shortly again that will make things very, very clear. We have a number of additional outreach points, including the use of social media, Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, all the things you typically see the police department on, where we will do everything we can to outreach. I think it's important, as your chief, that I make it clear, as you all know, but certainly to the public, that no matter how much outreach we do, we will not reach everyone. We found this in past enforcement initiatives that I brought to you. Inevitably, there will be a segment of our population that is upset with the fact that they didn't know this was happening, despite our efforts to outreach. There will be people who get tickets, who it's the very first time they parked there and didn't pay, and they didn't realize we were doing this. We will do everything we can to be very reasonable on the back end of this, as we've been with other initiatives and evaluating those citations, giving people the opportunity to know that this is what we're doing before we go fully live. Can you advance the slide, please? So, with that, I am, that concludes my report, and I'm certainly happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the report, Chief. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Chief, for the report. Regarding the signage, I understand it's, it's in production. Does that include the, the signs explaining the program, and does it also... Does that include the signs explaining the program, and does it also include directional signs showing people where the lots are? Because historically, that's always been a problem. There are a few very old, very sad signs that are directing people, but I don't think they're very effective. So are we redoing those as well?
Yes, but those are two separate projects at this point in time. So this is a significant concern of ours because you could have all these policies in terms of price that are designed to drive people to parking lots, so they don't know where the parking lots are. They're not going to know that alternative exists. So it is a priority. However, the Wayfinding Signage Project Downtown is a larger project due to the desire to brand that signage and not have very sad, poor signs in the future, but have ones we can count on. But it is a completely separate project that we would have to report back to you at a separate time. The signage I'm speaking about tonight is the signage about the fact that you must pay to park and how you do that.
Got it. So does that mean that the program could go live without Wayfinding signage in place?
Without the renewed Wayfinding signage, yes. There will be Wayfinding signage that explains that there are additional parking in the parking lots. It won't be the signage we've talked about at some length that is much more robust.
Okay. And then I think that's all I've got. I thought I had one other thing, but I've lost it. So I'm good. Thank you.
Other questions, colleagues? Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you very much, Chief. How are the residents being informed? Because I understand the business community has had some notification, but I was wondering like what has been done so far to let the residents know? Because sometimes you're gonna, when it turns on, people are gonna have to like figure it out pretty quick. And so I just wanted to hear like what has been done and what is being planned to be done to notify our residents of the area, and how far out are we going to go for that notification?
Yeah, excellent questions all the way around. To say how far out we're going to go, I think probably I have to differentiate between the different efforts we'll make. So there already has been, and there will be another, at least one other flyering effort that is actually conducted by Laz, the new outsourced parking resource, that's focused on the residential side, not the business side. That will not go out very far. That will essentially look to the impacted residents that are in the immediate vicinity of the downtown corridor, so loosely from El Camino to Mastick and from Canes to El Camino Real, if that makes sense. So kind of hitting those big blocks. We have done some specific outreach with the larger apartment complex there in an effort to reach their residents, make sure they know what's going on, including a town hall type structure where they could ask questions. As we get a little bit closer, well, I should back up a minute and say that I think one of our key ways to reach the residents we don't normally reach through social media and through even flyering has been the utility bill inserts in the past. Unfortunately, we missed a recent opportunity to send it out in a utility bill insert for that particular area, and those only hit each area once a month. So we're going to be up against a time constraint to try to get another utility bill insert in. That insert was in both English and Spanish in an effort to reach as many people as possible. At this point, we're just going to have to hope that we can do that with the next utility bill sent out. Beyond that, it'll be all social media work. And then the key element, as we found in past campaigns, is the warning period. That should hit the folks who actually park down there on a regular basis, whereas there may be many residents who do not, but we tend to see the same vehicles coming through because they patron their favorite businesses on a regular basis. And typically, in a two- to three-week warning period, we're going to issue, as you've seen with like sidewalk parking, I mean thousands and thousands of warnings that make it pretty clear that this is the new normal.
Right. And my suggestion there is to put the notice on the windshield, underneath the wiper, like as soon as we know more, like, hey, it's coming. And it generally takes two or three, if not more, just from experience of, you know, campaigns and stuff that you have to repeat and repeat and repeat. I don't need to know this now, but I think it's important that we look at the financial analysis of where we're at, because offering two free parking permits for the parking lots with 130-plus businesses or addresses, that's going to impact the actual revenue. And so we were balancing the cost of service with the rates, and so I don't want to get to a point where we're like, wow, we're really running in a big negative. And then what do we do, right? So at some point, if I can, through the city manager, and maybe it could be shared, I'm guessing it's on a spreadsheet with the number of, we saw that earlier, like the financial analysis, the first run of this rate. So I think I would prefer our requesting some more clarity on that so that after we leave tonight, it's like, I don't have an understanding of it. I'm worried that we're going to be running a deficit there, and we're already having trouble with the revenue in general in our city. So making sure that I don't want to see the prices go up and then, well, we have to change the prices on the free parking permits because then people are going to get comfortable with anything that's free. So I just would like to, at some point, have a better understanding of how we came up with these numbers, and that's fine. The question that I've received in the community is, so Laz is out there currently. What are they enforcing? What specifically, and I'm guessing double parking, red curb parking, what else is being done and where? It's not just downtown, it's across the city. So just wanted to hear that, and then how do we get that message out? Because these are vehicle code, problems parking, people park the wrong way, too, off the curb. I saw a neighbor that had their wheels weren't lined up, because I saw the parking citation on their car, and I was like, I wonder what that's for? And I went over and looked at it, because you could read on it, and it was, they didn't have their wheels turned on the grade. So just hoping that we get more of that information out there, because of course, people get upset when they get a ticket, right? So I was wondering if you could help share what they're doing and how the outreach to our community on that this enforcement is ongoing now. So I wonder if you could share a little bit with that.
Sure. It's a little bit challenging because the short answer that is not acceptable, but that is nonetheless the answer, is they're enforcing the California Vehicle Code, which is a very thick book with a lot of codes that even I don't know. That being said, we've been giving them pretty clear direction about the spirit of the law in San Bruno and that we want enforcement to be based on quality of life issues and things that actually impact the community. We have had growing pains in that regard. I will tell you that wheels not properly cramped to the curb is going to be one of those issues for me. There are very few streets in this city where that is completely appropriate because of the likelihood of rollaway and all kinds of problems if your car gets hit as someone's coming down the street. But there are also a lot of streets where technically that's the law and where I do not want citations issued for those sort of things. We've been very on top of that so far by handling the site appeals and voiding those tickets and continued training and mentoring with Laz as to what we want enforced and not. The remainder of what they're basically enforcing day-to-day are things we've already done a tremendous amount of outreach on but haven't been capable of doing adequate enforcement due to resources. We're talking about blocked sidewalks. We're talking about parking facing the wrong direction. We're talking about the 72-hour parking violations for abandoned vehicles. They've been really hot and heavy on the limos and the taxis down in the fifth edition and in the avenues, because those are areas where we've had complaints for years and haven't been able to do much about it. But they are sort of learning as we go based on our direction. So outreach is a little bit difficult, other than what we've been doing so far is just kind of putting the community on notice that, as we did right from the start, you bring in this outsourced and the enforcement posture, the city is going to be drastically different than anything it's ever seen before. This is a full-time staff of people who are paid to write parking tickets, and that's what they're going to do, is write a lot of parking tickets. Again, their objective is to do so as a mechanism to gain compliance, but the reality is that they will issue a lot of parking tickets. And so generally educating yourself about the vehicle code and simply not doing the things that you know are illegal but that you've gotten away with for a long time in San Bruno is probably the best advice I could give.
Fair. One other question, Mr. Mayor. What I think our community, well, I know what I really like when you guys do your PSAs, you know, and those are like, you could say something a thousand times, but to have the video behind it, you know, and like having examples and short little pieces that could be shared throughout the community that can be on the city's website, just to remind everybody, like, yeah, down on the east side of town, yeah, it's not, the grade isn't that great that you have to curb your wheels. I mean, I do it, but sometimes I may forget, just like you're in a hurry to get back into the house. So whatever can be done with that, I think that's a very effective way that we could all share, put it on the website. My last question for now, Mr. Mayor, is is there an option for residents to obtain a parking permit? Because starting at 6 o'clock, if you get home at 5:00 or 5:30, and you're like probably in a quandary of like, well, what am I going to do? I gotta go into that parking lot to pay for the meter? Or is there a way that maybe they could get some type of parking permit for that lot after a certain hour? Like, so that they're not caught every single time where in the lots, it's till 6:00, right? And people get off generally around 5:00, not everybody, but just kind of like in that gap, what can we do to make it a little easier besides the residential parking permit program for the people that are living on those adjacent streets, which eventually is going to come, I think, across all the avenues. It's just, there's too many cars. So I think we should be thinking about that, and I know you can't do anything currently right now for that residential parking permit. That'll be up to the council. But to try to think of a way to accommodate the residents that live in the area, right, adjacent to it, and there are residents that live downtown, there's probably like around 20 different units that are on the second story, and there's 83 units at Aperture, right? They have their own parking, but they park around the area, too. So just wanted to see if you could maybe come up with some magic bullet to kind of give that consideration of a parking permit for, starting at 5:00, because it's by your license plate, right? And so that's a resident coming home, you know, they obviously can't park in front of their apartment or home anymore because people that don't want to pay are parking there, and so they would have a place to park.
Yeah, I think that probably the best answer would be to say that we could certainly bring back some recommendations for how that could be handled. There's, built into this is regular reporting back to council from me as to what's happening with, you mentioned the numbers, the budget. How is this actually panning out in real data? I will say that this, like, the idea you brought up here with the one-hour gap of like 5:00 and 6:00 is going to be very, very difficult to accommodate without council considering the policy decision of changing the hours of enforcement to stop at 5:00, which we certainly could consider, or simply they would have to pay for that hour. There isn't really a mechanism within the current code or the system to establish like a one-hour exemption for certain residents or people. This system is built to dovetail into a variety of parking permit programs, including the RPPP at some point, but as those don't exist right now, I couldn't really speak to it.
Okay.
I have one question, then, Councilmember Hamilton. Could you just educate as far as the lot that is at City Hall, the hours that will be, as well as the El Camino? Because I know we had brought up before about a certain section of El Camino not being, but just wanted, because people were starting to ask, seeing the meters in various locations. Please.
Sure. I think on El Camino, you're talking about the area immediately in front of City Hall, which in a previous meeting, staff received some direction that we would like to not meter that area so that folks conducting business at City Hall could come in and out fairly quickly, not have to pay. So we did that, the area on El Camino immediately in front of City Hall. It was, I think, about six or eight parking spaces by metering standards that are not metered. They're free parking. The rest of El Camino, the rules that I stated earlier would apply. So 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM is the enforcement period, and it would be that $1.50 per hour to park there, just like it is on San Mateo Avenue, at least as of now. All this is adjustable over time. As far as the City Hall parking lot, this has traditionally been an employee parking lot. Employees for the city were issued parking permits essentially to be in that lot. That's the only place they have to park during their working hours. And then there was sort of an informal, non-codified system by which residents would frequently use that lot, both during the day while employees were there and after hours when it emptied out and became more open. We've simply formalized that in this new program. So it will be a city employee parking-only lot between that 8:00 and 6:00 timeframe, just like all the other city lots. And then after that period of time, residents will be able to use it for parking, just like they do now anyway, but it'll be formalized that they can do so.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
So I remembered my other question, so apologies for going twice. And it had to do with the revenue piece of it as well. So there's been lots of comments from folks in the community about, you know, what's happening with the money that we're collecting from the meters and from the increased enforcement through citations. So my understanding, and I'm just looking for confirmation that my understanding is correct, is that all the money from the meters is going into the parking fund, and the first use of that money is to pay back the loan from the general fund that was used to establish the program. And then beyond that, that's going to be up to council and staff to come together and work through that through the budget process. But as of right now, there's no mechanism for any monies that would be collected through the meters to be, you know, used for any other projects or anything like that. That's my understanding, and I just wanted to confirm that that's correct.
I think my understanding would maybe require a small point of clarification. So all the revenues from the metering is supposed to go into this parking fund, correct? I don't know that it's yet been established as to the repayment of the loan.
Sorry, Chief. Please, the chief of police is trying to give a presentation and answer questions. I'd ask the audience if you could please respect, so we can hear his response. Please go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so the funds will all go into this parking fund. I don't know, and certainly our chief financial officer may be able to speak to it, that we've yet established whether there's a repayment of the initial funds that were used to seed the project. But I believe the primary use of those funds initially is to pay the ongoing costs of the program, and that from there, those monies would be dispersed at the sole discretion of council.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that it was, and that makes sense. Of course, the ongoing funding of Laz was, and the enforcement was the primary use of the money. I should have mentioned that as well. So I just wanted to make sure that the point about, there was some concern from folks that the money would, you know, disappear into other projects and all that kind of stuff. And as of right now, there's no mechanism for that to happen. It can't happen, and we will address how that money gets used during the budget process, which is getting underway very shortly.
That's my understanding as well. Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions at this time, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We move on to item F, receive mid-year. There's no speaker cards. I'm sorry. Item F, receive mid-year financial update report for fiscal year 2023-24 as of December 31st, 2023. We'll ask our CFO, please. Good evening. And then I'll open it up to the floor, I'm sorry, to the public for anything on presentations and announcements.
Good evening, councilmembers, and Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Nick Bigaros. I'm the city's chief financial officer, and this evening I'm providing a presentation on the city's general fund finances for the first six months of the fiscal year, which began July 1 of 2023. So just as a bit of a reminder, the city's general fund, the adopted budget has a total revenue budget of $64.9 million. When we look at the distribution of those revenues, by and large, 82% of the source of revenues are taxes and allocations. Taxes include property taxes, sales taxes, business license taxes, transient occupancy tax. allocations include our internal overhead allocations, which result in funds getting transferred between the different funds for various administrative support functions. Our police and building programs both generate about 5% of the total revenue budget, and then our recreation and other programs about 2%. So the first graph I want to present to the city council contains data on three points, and I apologize, I can't see those, but I'm glad I have a presentation. Just to orient you, the dark blue graph is the actual receipts for the same period of to orient you, the dark blue graph is the actual receipts for the same period in the previous fiscal year. So these are monies received from July 1 of 2022 to December 31, 2022. The middle bar, the orange bar, is the prorated budget for the first half of the year. And then the gray bar is the actual receipts for this current fiscal year from July 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. The reason I presented the information in this, in this fashion is to have two checks on where we are during this current fiscal year. First, the blue bar is a check against what we collected same period previous year. And this gives us the opportunity to evaluate whether there have been any substantive or structural changes to our revenues that may be of note and worthy of discussion. The second comparison is to our appropriated budget. So approximately half of the budget that was adopted is represented in the orange part, in the orange graph, bar, and, oop, apologies. And the reason we want to compare to that is to see how far off we may be towards the end of the year when we close our books. So by and large, if we look at these charts, we're hoping for a incline going from bottom, going from the left to the right, going upward. You'll note, I'll just talk about a couple of items here. Our property taxes are higher than what we had budgeted in previous year by about 5% or $340,000. These increases are attributed to substantive or substantial changes to the assessed value for our commercial properties due to construction at, at the YouTube site. One of the areas of consideration that we are, that we are, that we are working into our budget process is that, as you may recall, during the Great Recession, the San Mateo County Tax Collector, I'm sorry, the Assessor, proactively reduced assessed values in recognition that the market had softened, the real estate market and property values had softened. That we have seen a significant uptick. By significant, it's sort of like one, you know, the increase from one to two is 100% increase. But by significant uptick, I mean, compared, compare 5 to 31. So we're nowhere near the high, but we are seeing an uptick in, in reassessment requests. Our sales tax number, why does this keep moving? Our sales tax is a, is a significant revenue. There are a number of elements here that are at play. The most significant is we're experiencing a 16% decline year over year. So if we compare the blue bar to the gray bar, that decrease, $1 million, is attributed to a, a tax filing that was made by one of our taxpayers that should not have been reported to San Bruno. So we received that money in previous periods, and now the state franchise, or I'm sorry, the California Department of Revenue, CDT, Tax and Fee Administration, CDTFA, is making the adjustments. So we are seeing reductions in our, in our sales tax this fiscal year, and we'll see a small reduction next year as well. The good news, or the bright side on our sales tax is that our, some of our restaurants and our hotel taxes, sales tax revenues are up year over year. That is offset by some of the decreases in consumer goods as well as fuel, almost for a net zero. All that to say, despite, despite the reductions that I've outlined, or the loss of the $1 million from the, from the reallocation of, of misfiled taxes, we are expecting to achieve the budget number for sales tax. So we don't have an alarm bell just yet to sound. There are other areas with regard to sales tax that we'll talk about at the council retreat. The next sort of significant item I'd like to bring to the council's attention is the VLF, the Vehicle License Fee. So the Vehicle License Fee is composed of two components. The first is a relatively small amount that we receive directly from the state, relatively small being about $50,000. And then we receive a more significant portion of the Vehicle License Fee through property tax. So it's called Property Tax in lieu of Vehicle License Fee, and, and our budget contain, includes about $6.5 million for the current fiscal year. The, the way the Property Tax in lieu of Vehicle License Fee works is it relies on the amount of money that is collected or withheld from cities to meet the state's obligations for schools. Through a complicated mechanism, the amount that, in our county, the number of, of schools, the state's, I'm sorry, the state's commitment to the schools is, is higher than, is lower than what our local property tax, school districts would receive. And so as a consequence of that, there's less money going into a pot that then provides the backfill for the Vehicle Licensing Fee. Across the county, there is a shortfall of 43% for the current fiscal year, which equates to $114 million. We're seeing about a 35% reduction in our, our estimate is 35% reduction, which is about $1 million. This matter is, this is something that regularly comes up. I believe it came up during our past budget cycle, and there's, there often are attempts to have Sacramento fix the formula so that cities can, in San Mateo County and a host of other counties, receive the funds rather than being at risk of losing them due to the, due to these, the school funding. And then finally, the one big area that I'd like to point out is our, is our interest earnings. We have invested our funds in higher-yield investments, and that, as you can see, compared year to year, it's about a 300% increase, the blue bar to the, to the gray bar on the, on the far, on the second to right. Okay. So those were our general revenues. Those are revenues that don't apply to specific departments. Okay. Those are revenues that don't, that do not apply to specific departments, general taxes, et cetera. We do also have department revenues. So these are revenues that departments collect, whether they be fees, fines, or reimbursements, agreements with other agencies for services that we provide. Similarly, this compares, the blue, the blue bar compares revenue from the same period last fiscal year to the gray bar, which is this current fiscal year. As you can see, the standout here, well, there are two standouts, but one didn't quite get adjusted in the, what's being shown up on the screen. The first standout is our building inspection program, which is both a collection, which is a sum of our building permits, as well as our plan check fees. And plan check fees is really where the revenue is, is so substantially higher this year compared to both budget and last year. And those are attributed to a, to YouTube and their development and the activity occurring at that campus. This is not an ongoing revenue, and it is also not 100% general fund revenue. This revenue is, does have a pass-through expenditure to the contractor who may perform, who performs the plan checks services. Nonetheless, it's a positive, positive differential. For both our police and fire programs, their revenues are substantially reimbursements for services provided, whether they be mutual aid requests for an emergency, or agreements that we have with other agencies to support their efforts. Those, the reason we see variances here is the timing of the, of the reimbursements fluctuate year to year. And then finally, well, not finally, but second item, or the, one area of particular attention is the recreation program. And as you can see, the orange bar there sticks out far above the two bars to each side, and that reflects that our budget anticipated an increase in recreation programming this fiscal year. And for a variety, for a variety of reasons, we have not been able to expand our recreation programs this year. So our revenue is not coming in as, as expected, or at least as budgeted. Now, one offsetting aspect of this is that we do have cost savings on the expenditure side, because we had, for the programming increase, we also had expenditure increases. And then what shows on the slide is a, there was a earlier, this is an earlier version that was caught after the fact. The blue bar is not that large. I just want, there was, there was a, the blue bar represents a sum of some other, some other columns. And so you don't have it in front of you, unfortunately, but the blue bar is, is just slightly lower than the orange and the, and the gray bar for other programs. So moving on to expenditures, we're presenting the expenditures, just as a reminder for the adopted budget. The adopted budget was $66.4 million in revenue. 73% of that are salaries and benefits, which is reflective of the nature of our organization and that we're a service-based organization, and the vast majority of our costs exist in the personnel category. We also have supplies, materials, and services, which encompasses effectively all other categories, from consulting services to utilities, et cetera, and that represents about 14% of our budget. And then the, the other intergovernmental and transfers collectively are 13%. So again, similar methodology, the, the dark blue bar reflects the expenditures for the same period previous fiscal year. So that would be July 1, 2020, July 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022. Moving on over, the orange bar is budget, and then the gray bar is, is actual as of December 31, 2023. You'll see that our, that there are salary savings in the general fund of approximately 1.1 million, or 4.6%, which is reflective of vacancies. We also see that on our service, our supplies, materials, and services, that the gray bar and blue bar both far, both exceed the orange bar. And the reason for this is that we have a practice of, of committing funds in previous fiscal years that we do not spend, and then those funds carry over automatically into the new fiscal year, which bumps up, which bumps up the expenditure. We have not asked council to amend the budget yet for those contract services, or for those encumbrances. We will be bringing that back in February. Once we do that, it will, the, the orange bar will adjust upward to show relatively flat change over the three, over the three bars. So just wrapping up the presentation, we have a lot on our, on our plate over the next several months, as I'll talk later in the, later in the council meeting. But we're, just to highlight a couple of the areas, looking forward to the next year, next fiscal year budget, which begins July 1. On the revenue side, already mentioned several items, the VLF, or the Vehicle License in lieu fee. We're, we're aware of the tax share agreement and the pending lawsuit on that particular, on that particular revenue source. We have yet to receive confirmation or determination from FEMA about funds that were spent in response to the winter storm for 2023. There were two events, actually, in 2023. And that can have, if we do not receive that, that can have a, if we do not receive reimbursement, that can have a negative impact. Economic development, just very, various activities that we'll talk about in the, at the retreat. And then finally, we're, we've seen the headlines from the state budget and its deficit woes. It seems that every deficit woes at the state level come, eventually come back and focus on the local revenue availability. On the expenditure side, just areas that we monitor closely, clearly unpredicted or unpredictable extreme weather, as we saw in 2023 with the winter storms, has, is a risk factor going forward. We do have one of our labor agreements that expires in fiscal year '25 with our largest employee group. We also anticipate increases in health and welfare costs, as well as unfunded pension liabilities. And then finally, a matter for, for future discussion is the going concern, or the question of both CityNet and the Stormwater Enterprise having sufficient funds to continue operations. So as I mentioned, we have a number of items over the next several months that speak to the budget, next six months, really, that speak to our financial plan for the future. And, and we'll kick that off there with the retreat and continue on through, through June. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Medina?
So, thank you for the presentation. It's a little different, right, from previous directors with it being more in a written form than a graphical form. And, and so I appreciate something that's different. The, the easier part that, from the previous way is kind of like, we could see more like you cannot, basically being told, don't worry. Right now, there's, there's not too much to be worried about. It's kind of tracking right. That's, that's generally what we've heard majority of times. So I guess, I guess I'm trying to get that out of you. Like, you brought up a couple concerns, but like, there's nothing alarming really here, because I just wanted to just hear that from you. Right?
Absolutely. And, and thank you, Councilmember Medina. This, this report typically comes to the council towards the end of February, and for a variety of reasons, and we accelerated it just a bit, given a number of considerations and where we are in our budget development process. But to answer your question very directly, there is nothing that I'm aware of in looking at the mid-year financials for the first six months of the general fund fiscal year that, that is of concern. The most significant is the, is the, well, not, overall, I'm not, I'm not super concerned. The VLF that I mentioned is a matter that we need to monitor closely, and then ensuring that when the recreation programming comes online, how that affects the year-end numbers. So those are the two areas that I would highlight for, for concern.
No other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. I know you'll be back. With that, let's see if we have any public comments on any of the items that we had under announcements and presentations, please. Come on up, Rebecca.
We have Matt Jones, Alenny, Justin Fang, and Rebecca Milano.
Thank you, council. I just have a couple things that I wanted to address. In the police, the police chief's presentation, he mentioned that they were going to start, or not, not going to start ticketing until one to two weeks. And I was hoping maybe that could be on the longer end, like two weeks seems, seems fair enough. And I appreciate that the money is going to be used for, to pay off some loan that you all have. From my understanding, when the parking was first in discussion, it was talked about that the funds were going to be allocated towards downtown. I hope that that's what we are planning on doing, because Mayor Medina's been in, on the council for 26 years, and it's been dilapidated the whole time. Yeah, that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Milano, and I own One Love Cafe. And I'm very sorry to be even talking about parking when our community's out here asking for your help, and some of you just blatantly ignored their requests. So I apologize that I have to talk about something as ridiculous as parking.
To keep to the topics on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the presentation, I too have, the reason I started coming to these city council meetings was because I opened a little business and then immediately found out about the parking. My first question was, why? This was already an ignored, it felt oppressed, I use the word oppressed freely. Before these people even got here, I was feeling oppressed in San Bruno. So you're not alone. It's not just you guys. It's, they don't care about anybody. What I'm here to say is that public comment-
Please let the speaker speak, please.
So I've been coming up here, talking about the parking, asking for the funds to be directed downtown, and it- And it wasn't until maybe two weeks ago that I was directed to wait until the budget meetings. Nobody responded to us, nobody responded to our concerns. We were kind of given the runaround of, it'll be decided by the council. So Ms. Alvarez, I asked you to meet with the merchants. You ignored me as well. So I really hope that, to the city of San Bruno, the residents that can vote here, I hope that you do vote in people that actually listen to public comment and that take into consideration their constituents and the business owners' concerns. Because from what I've seen here of the last six months of coming to these meetings and coming to talk to all of you guys, is that two people care about downtown and the rest of you really don't. There's been nothing, like Alany just said, 26 years as a cafe owner, all I hear all day is how great downtown used to be, how it was a bustling community, and all we've gotten is the runaround. The streets are horrible, there's people that have been in business for 30 years that have legit holes where people can fall and hurt themselves. So if safety is such a concern, why are the streets of San, of San Mateo Avenue full of holes, full of, there was Facebook posts of dog poop all day? So, you know, the inequality has been consistent here. I've been hearing that people like the police chief are looking to make things a little bit more equitable. And I'm very respectful of people that keep it real and that acknowledge past corruption in the city of San Bruno, and that acknowledge that the city is not equitable and that people are not being listened to. And I do want to say thank you to those council members that are making an effort to listen to the community and to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Mr. Jones.
Hi there. I signed up, this is Matt Jones again. I signed up to speak on the item for Black History Month, the resolution. I prepared a statement on it. I wanted to thank you for passing this important resolution to honor Black History Month. Many of our nations and the world's leaders that we revere and we were taught about in schools are black. For example, we all consider Nelson Mandela a hero for his heroic fight ending apartheid in South Africa. One of the best ways to honor Black History Month and the legacies of our heroes is to recognize similarities between historic oppression and current examples of oppression, and to speak out against examples of racism that we encounter. We need to build trust across communities, across races, to show up. And actually, your resolution literally states that San Bruno is united against hatred. We need to understand the parallels between black South Africans and Gazans, both of whom have suffered under apartheid, which is why South Africa bringing Israel before the World Court under accusations of genocide of the Palestinian people. Therefore, the best way the council can honor Black History Month would be to adopt a ceasefire resolution. After all, Dr. King said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Justin?
Back doors for here!
We have another speaker when you're ready.
Hello, city council. I don't have anything as exciting as that to say, other than that, yeah, I just hope that whatever revenue is generated from the parking meters is redirected to downtown. It's a vital part of San Bruno, a vital part of the community, and it plays a huge role in the city in general. Yeah, that's all I just wanted to say. Hope, as much, if not all, of the revenue from the parking meters should be directed to downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other speakers on announcements and presentations?
I have no other speaker cards.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented at, at an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be a single public comment period for all these items at the end of the section unless a council member has requested to pull an item for a separate vote. And correct me, city manager, but on item F, receive and file the annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, we are pulling because they are finalizing the report?
That's correct. It'll be brought back to your next council meeting.
Okay. With that, we have the other items, which are A through J, with the exception of F. Is there any council member that wants to pull for a separate, a separate vote? Seeing, hearing none, are there any items for comment or question? Councilmember Hamilton?
I have a brief comment on item I.
Thank you. Anything else? Let's go to item I, receive progress update on fiscal year 23, 24, city council strategic initiatives for the second quarter, October through December 2023. Councilmember Hamilton?
So as we heard in the, the last item, on February 1st, the council will meet in a strategic initiatives retreat. And one thing that struck me immediately after assuming office was the incredibly large number of initiatives that are on our strategic initiatives list. And, and you know, we're expected to tackle all of those all at once. With our revenue and staffing levels, we end up making small progress each year on some of them and can't complete very many of them at all. This is a comment I could have easily made during the retreat, but I wanted to make it now because I want us to spend every possible second during that retreat, working together to, to whittle down that list and get us, get us focused. I want to urge all of my colleagues here, don't be afraid to deprioritize an initiative. That doesn't mean we don't care. That means that we're accepting the reality that we can't do everything all at once. If we try to do everything, then we don't make progress on anything. So I want us to focus on what we as a group deem most important so we can get progress, projects completed for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilor Medina?
No, no apology needed. And it's the budget and the strategic initiatives that are very, very important, that those are additional meetings that you can provide your input. And I also agree that, that we've been told in the past that we have too many, and it's clear we do. And having 47 items as initiatives, you can't have a real priority unless you pare that down. So I look forward to the meeting to see how we can move forward. Thank you.
And only yet is, I think the city manager has met with each of us, which we call it a one-on-one, and has asked us to be reasonable and understanding and, in order to, what we have on the table, deal with what we have on the table and to continue progress. Anything else? Any public comment on consent?
I have no speaker cards.
Then is there any action from council? Motion Salazar, Second Alvarez, to approve consent with the exception, which has been pulled, item F. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is unanimous. We'll move on to item seven, public hearings. City clerk?
Item 7A, consider introducing read-by-title-only and waiving a further reading entitled ordinance of the city council of the city of San Bruno, amending Articles 2 subdivisions and Article 3 zoning of Title 12 land use for minor amendments and finding such action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Planning and housing manager, please, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Michael Loughlin, planning and housing manager for the community development department. And do I have my presentation? Ah, here we go. Great. I will be presenting some minor amendments that we're proposing to the zoning and subdivision For this evening, our agenda is, includes an objective for the hearing tonight, some background on the amendments, a description of the proposed amendments, and concluding with staff's recommendation. The objective for the item is to listen to a staff presentation, receive any public comment, do a question and answer with a discussion, and finally, with, including with a city council action. So by way of background, the proposed amendments have been identified as staff that provide clarity and provide flexibility to our code. And the planning commission reviewed these minor amendments at their December 19th meeting and is unanimously recommending approval to the city council. I do want to note that these proposed amendments are separate from the process amendments that the city council and the planning commission discussed at the December 12th joint planning commission city council meeting. And those, those amendments are scheduled for review in March of 2024. These amendments are being brought ahead of the process amendments since a couple of them do affect current projects that the planning division is working on. All right. There are seven proposed minor amendments that we're bringing forward to you, and I'm going to do a summary of each one of them. The first one is to, would allow for a height increase in our M1 zone, which is roughly located between San Mateo Avenue and Montgomery Avenue north of 380, and it generally consists of relatively small lots. So the amendment would allow for a height increase from 35 feet to 50 feet for, for buildings and properties that are more than one acre in size. And this amendment would benefit the Amazon property, which is the former Park and Ride Lot, since they seek to build up to 50 feet with their new proposal. And that height is allowed under the general plan and our Height Ordinance 1284. The amendment may also benefit other properties and serves as a minor economic development incentive, encouraging lots, lot consolidation. And because industrial projects may have a greater impact on the community, the amendment also requires that these new developments would require planning permit approval at a public hearing. Next, the subdivision ordinance would clarify that the city can approve flexible street standards for new subdivisions. So this was done for the Bay Hill specific plan, and it is being contemplated for the subdivision that's proposed at Crestmore High School. For the third amendment, a common question that staff receives is when a structure is required to meet setback requirements. So for example, a grade-level patio is not required to meet setbacks, however, a cover patio or porch is. So the code says nothing about when a structure is subject to setback requirements. To clarify this height, the, the height requirement for a structure, we're recommending that that be set at one foot above grade. The fourth amendment is about the determination of front setbacks. And currently, the front setback is considered the shortest distance along a public street. And so what this amendment would do would be allow for determining of a setback on a corner lot that would give property owners the opportunity to request a change to which of their street frontages is face, is considered their front yard. So proposed amendment number five is when the amendment was done to the parking code, the parking standard for assembly uses was changed from one parking space for every 100 square feet of floor area to one for every 300 square feet of floor area, which is equivalent to office parking. After the review of the assembly use application, of a assembly use application by the planning commission, the, the commission was concerned that this standard would not provide enough parking, and the standard, standard is recommended to be returned to one parking space per 100 square feet of floor area. And the planning commission supports this change. The last two amendments are, would add definitions. The, the term lot coverage is used often in the code, and it is not defined, so we're proposing adding a definition for that. And likewise, the term veterinarian is currently listed as a type of medical office, but is not defined, so a definition is proposed. So in conclusion, the proposed amendments are minor and propose to clarify and provide flexibility. As I mentioned before, the amendments have been unanimously recommended to you from our planning commission. And finally, staff is recommending to introduce read-by-title-only and waive a further reading of the ordinance as previously read by the city clerk. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, first we'll take, if there are public comments, this is a hearing. So are there any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards.
Once we close public hearing, that will preclude the public from speaking on this topic. Last call for any public comment. With that, action from council to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing. Second?
Motion, Hamilton, Second Marty Medina to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is unanimously. Now we'll have questions from council colleagues, please. Councilor Medina?
Yeah. Thank you very much for the presentation. I wonder if you could remind myself, remind me of what the flexible street standards were? Like, so I, what, what was the, what are we talking about?
I don't remember the specifics for Bay Hill, but if you remember, Bay Hill has a lot of, some wider sidewalks than our normal streets standards, also, you know, incorporation of bike lanes and, and landscaping and, you know, differing widths. Currently in our code, they're very prescribed to the very standard, you know, four foot, five foot setback by X feet of street, and so there's no flexibility there.
So is the interest to provide wider sidewalks, or, I mean, what, what is the objective here?
It's just to provide flexibility for review of a differing street standard with a proposed subdivision. So for example, Crest, Crestmore, you know, there was the, you know, looking at adding parking, perpendicular parking spaces along the street. So that, that's different than our standard streets, standard. So, so again, it just allows for flexibility by, in review by community development and the city engineer in making recommendations that differ from our standard, street standards.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time from colleagues? Bring it back to council if there's any action.
I'll, I'll move to, move to approve as read by the city clerk.
Is there a second? Motion made by Hamilton, seconded by Alvarez, to approve as read by city clerk. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous approved. Before we move on to item eight, which is conduct of business, we're going to take Okay, we're going to reconvene the city council meeting, and we are on item eight, conduct of business. City clerk?
Item A, receive presentation regarding age-friendly city ad hoc recommendations and consider adoption of a resolution to apply for the AARP age-friendly cities and communities designation.
Oh, I'll take it away, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am Damian Sandholm, Community Services Deputy Director for the City of San Bruno. This evening, we have Roy Ernst from the Center for Age Friendly Excellence here to provide a presentation regarding the age-friendly cities process. Roy will provide an overview of the AARP age-friendly cities designation and outline the steps he has taken with the focus groups and age-friendly task force to reach this place in the process. This project was identified by the council as a strategic initiative for the 2022-23 fiscal year. I will now turn it over to Roy for his presentation.
Thank you, Damian. Welcome, Roy. Please.
Thank you. Thanks, Damian. Yeah, so I, Damian asked me to do a summary of, of the work that I've done with a wonderful group of people who, three of whom are here today. Maria and Elena Barr, Maria, Elena Barr, Stephanie Rutgers, and Pat Bone. If you just wave your hands over there. Okay, good. And Damian was one of the city staff members that worked with us as well. And Lynn Hanlow is from the senior center. So just want to start out with some reminder of what age-friendly community initiatives are. So it's a, it's a community-wide effort to promote and support planning strategies, programs, events, and projects that address specific unmet needs of older adult residents that further enhanced, enhance the livability of the community for them, as well as those of all ages. And I add is that those of all ages because age-friendly projects and initiatives usually benefit people of all ages, not just older adults. Okay. So the, the second slide, here's the process we went through. Oh, okay. There we go. Great. All right. The process we went through over the past eight months. In March, I presented to, to the city council about what age-friendly was all about. And you, you gave us all the green, green light to get started. Then I met with city staff. We recruited our age-friendly task force members. We started a process of getting community input and reviewing that input and assessing it. And that started in July and went through November of last year. We recruited over 60 focus group participants throughout San Bruno, very diverse group. And then we met with those focus group participants in about 25 different focus group sessions that we had between August and November. And then the task force read the reports that I wrote. And so we could identify what unmet needs of older adult residents have here in San Bruno. Then we looked at all the reports and we developed, and we, we brainstormed about 60 different age-friendly project ideas. And then we boiled it down to the list that's, that's before you today, that I'll go over in a minute. Then I drafted, with the help of the task force, I drafted the membership application to ARP, ARP Network of Age Friendly Communities. And that was completed in November. Now we have three more steps to go, and that's, the mayor signs a cover letter with the application, which the letter will be ready for the mayor tomorrow. The application gets sent to ARP's National Network for their review. And, and the city becomes a member of the ARP National Network. That's, that's the last steps of the process. Okay. So I just want to talk a little bit about the focus group. Thanks, Damian. Each, each focus group was no more than 10 people because we wanted to give people enough time to say what they wanted to say. And then the task force in, in the city assists with recruiting the residents. We recruited a focus, we created a focus group schedule. And then, then I facilitated each focus group. All right, so that's the focus group process. The questions we asked during the focus group was, each one, was what's the livability challenges of San Bruno? What are the livability strengths of San Bruno? What are your ideas to enhance the livability of San Bruno? And, and then I, I collated the notes. I produced a series of focus group reports, provided them to the task force. They reviewed the reports, and then we came up with our list of age project ideas. The other thing I wanted to mention is we, we, we didn't just kind of randomly seek input on, on what the livability challenges were. We, we specifically went over eight domains. Transportation, housing, social participation, respect and social inclusion, civic participation and employment opportunities, communication and information, community support and health services, and outdoor spaces and buildings. All right, so, so here's, here's what the task force came up with after coming up with 60, 60 age-friendly project ideas, which was a lot of fun to do. We boiled it down to these eight, all right? And, and here, and most of them don't cost any money at all to do, or very little money. One is, which many cities do, many cities around the country who do these age-friendly initiatives, is, is they encourage the use of an age-friendly lens by, by every city department and by community organizations in, in their community. And that's basically to kind of just, before the city makes a decision on anything, you ask the question, well, how will this impact older adults? And if you think about that, you, you can probably identify many things that you've made decisions on in the past year that had a very positive impact on older adults. So you're already doing age-friendly work. And then number two, and this is a common one too for many cities. There, there was concern by many of the focus group participants that there was too many cracked sidewalks, too many scary intersections. And, and, and they, they wanted to be able to walk more safely in their neighborhood. So what the task force is recommending the city do is, is perform a pedestrian safety walk audit. And ARP has a walk audit toolkit that many cities have used. And it's, it's a really useful tool. And most cities, what they do to help out their, their public works department staff is they recruit volunteers to help with, with the walk audit. So, so the staff of the public works department doesn't have to do it all. All right. Number three is establish a San Bruno centenary, centenarian celebration project. And I just read the other day that the fastest growing segment of the population in the United States is centenarians, people who reach 100 years old and beyond. So from what I understand from people that I've talked to, the many people I've talked to here in San Bruno, they know many people who've reached 100, and it would be great if the city could honor them in, in, in a variety of ways that, that we can talk about in more detail as we go forward. Offer a free workshop series on a variety of aging-related issues and opportunities. A lot of cities are doing this. And, and there's a lot of people here in the Bay Area that would be happy to come to San Bruno and talk about caregiving issues, Alzheimer's, and, and how to prevent it, and what to do if, if a person gets it. And, and they can, they can offer their services for free to do those presentations because it's part of their mission in their work and, and the agencies that they work with. Update information about older support services and opportunities. Again, a lot of cities choose to do this because they feel like they want to give their residents the best information available about what, what, what services are out there and what opportunities are out there. Establish a discount taxi voucher program. So far, San Mateo, Daly City, and a couple other cities here in, in San Mateo County have implemented taxi voucher programs for their older adult residents so they can get to important appointments like medical appointments without too much delay. And that's, that's the one that costs some money. So that's something you'll have to think about. Then real quick, create temporary rest and relaxation areas at big community events. Pacifica did that at their Fog Fest this past year, and the rest areas were very popular. People used them and they were really appreciative, including one of the city council members who I know very well. And then establish new programs for older adults at the San Bruno Recreation Aquatic Center. There's a lot of excitement among a lot of the people that I talked to about the new aquatic center and recreation center. And one of the most common comments in, in my focus groups was, we hope that the city will think about programming that will be of interest to older adults in that, in that beautiful new facility. All right. So there, there were some other things that the task force wanted, wanted to make sure we added. But that would require a bit more outreach and, and collaboration with a variety of groups here in, in San Bruno. One is explore collaborations with local businesses that are, would be interested in hosting gatherings for older adults or multi-generational groups. And some examples would be movie screenings, travel presentations, sip and paint events, or small concerts. Two, explore intergenerational volunteer opportunities with the local school district and Skyline College to offer mentoring, tutoring, and internship opportunities. And then three is consider redesigning small portions of city parks for older adult residents. And some examples might be pickleball courts, small amphitheaters, places to meet in small groups, accessible trails, and natural presentations. And then the last, which is a very popular thing in the focus groups, was many people are aware that South San Francisco has a free shuttle service, and they would love to have a free shuttle service here in San Bruno. And, and that's something that the task force recommends. That the city explores further as, as you move along in your age-friendly efforts. And last, last slide is, just want to make sure we're all aware that the way ARP's National Network has it set up for their member cities is, is they would like the city to make a commitment to make this just a routine part of what you do as a city is think about how you can improve the livability of, of your community for older adults. And, and so that, so there's usually a process where when a city first becomes a member, they, they get their feet wet, you know, they, they implement three to five projects that they feel they can, they can do. And after about the second or third year, they, they use the experience that they had implementing the inaugural projects, and they develop an action plan that helps them focus on sustainability of their efforts. They implement new set, set of feasible projects. They evaluate as they go along, and then they renew their commitment to doing this for five years. ARP and many other people believe that this is a focus that every community should have a long-term commitment to, just like they should have a commitment to supporting children, the youth in their community, families, and all that good stuff. And then network membership finally is what basically ARP is looking for are cities that want to make a commitment to continually improving livability. And by being a member, cities get access to free training, many replicable project ideas, and access to funding tips for, for new projects. That's, that's my summary. Yep.
Thank you, Roy. So staff is seeking direction from the council to identify the inaugural projects to include in the application. in the application for the age-friendly cities designation. Items one through eight are listed. Please remember that item six, the taxi voucher program, would require some additional review and working with neighboring agencies to see how they put that together. The staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution to apply for the ARP age-friendly cities and communities designation. Staff and the consultant Roy are available for questions.
Thank you both very much for your comments, and thank you, Roy, for the presentation. Any feedback from council? At this time, I know some of it is budget-oriented, and I do understand that, but are there any initial questions or comments from colleagues at this time? Councilmember Medina, then Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you for being here. I can't help but think about my dad. You know, my dad just going to be turning 91, God willing, and he's having these difficulties that, as you said, just walking down the street and having a place for him to kind of relax, because he needs to take a rest, you know? He's not as strong as he was from, you know, five years ago. So, I love this. I know we have an incredible senior center, and this goes like hand-in-hand dovetailing into additional services. My question for you is, of the list of items, do you have a priority of what you would like to take on first? And then with that priority of the amount of staff effort and budget? Because that's something that we all should be thinking about, is of what's achievable, how much it's going to cost, and how much time it would take. So I was wondering if you could share any of that analysis, or what the number-one thing the residents want? Because you had, like, was it eight of them listed there? So just wanted to see what the thought behind that is, and if there was something that was a higher priority of how that would be addressed.
Do you have a clear one?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Okay. Yeah, so ARP is a very flexible, you're not applying for a grant, you're just announcing your intention as a community to give some priority to, you know, how you make decisions and think about how it impacts your older residents in the city. So if you included these eight projects in your application, they wouldn't expect you, you know, if you didn't do a few of these projects, because you decided that you just can't, don't have the capacity to do it, it's not a big deal to the ARP. All they want is you to do what you think is feasible and you think would be effective in enhancing the livability of your community. So the other answer I have to that question is, most cities that we've worked with, we kind of leave it up to the city to make the priorities, because you know what your capacities are. The other recommendation we make with all the cities that we've worked with, we've worked with most of the cities in San Mateo County, is we strongly advise you to work with a community group. You have three members of the community group here, to just kind of advise you and kind of be your sounding board, and be able to kind of think through some things, and use their networks to help the city get done what you want to get done. The top three things that I feel are doable in the next six months is the use of an age-friendly lens. That doesn't cost any money, it's just an attitude adjustment, and you probably have that, already made that adjustment in many ways. A pedestrian safety walk audit, that's a well-traveled road, pardon the poor pun, and it's a very doable project with help from a community volunteers. A free workshop series on a variety of aging-related issues and opportunities. From what I understand, the senior center already does that. This suggestion from the task force is just to augment that and bring in a few more speakers, basically. Yeah, anyway.
And so we did try to choose items that would be a little bit easier, and they don't cost a lot of money to start. They will obviously take some staff time, but it should be less staff time than some of the other bigger projects.
Great, thank you very much.
Councilmember Hamilton?
So I have just a quick clarifying question and then a comment. So you had mentioned that you're looking for council direction on the items themselves, but you're not looking for that tonight. Tonight, we're just looking for approval to move forward with the application. Is that correct?
It's move forward with the application, and the application will require us to put some inaugural initiatives in there, but there is no commitment to complete those in a certain period of time.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you very much. I am absolutely in favor of this. As Councilmember Medina said, you know, we already do a lot for our seniors. We have this wonderful facility that we're sitting in, a lot of great programs here that are very, very popular. And what I like about what I'm seeing here is that it's taking the good work we're doing here and bringing it outside these walls and across the community and everything that we do. And that's how you build a community, so I'm absolutely in favor of this.
Okay. For myself, first, I have to thank the county, because they are the ones who helped to facilitate this. This is a measure from Supervisor David Canepa. And I brought this forward, and I know there wasn't unanimous dialogue up here to actually or vote to go forward with it, but in the end, we all did support it. And I think that these are some great, you gave three examples of number one, number two, and number four. I would also, would include, create temporary rest and relaxation areas at big community events. And I think that's something we don't think of. As an example, I'm thinking back to the holiday tree lighting on San Mateo Avenue. I mean, it was great and all that, but there was no seating. So those that may need it or require it, I think we need to be more mindful of that for all folks. And it doesn't even have to be with this age, it's also just about folks that have to get off their feet, or have back issues or other ailments that may require them to sit down, and I think we need to be mindful of those activities. That's just my feedback. And then, yes, there is a resolution to adopt, but before I do that, let's see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak.
We have one speaker card, Maria Elena Barr.
Good evening, Mayor Medina, Honorable Councilmembers, neighbors, and friends. My name is Maria Elena Barr. I'm an Army veteran, a resident of San Bruno since 1974. I'm a survivor of the explosion in San Bruno where I lost several of my friends. I love living in San Bruno, and this is why I'm here tonight, to talk to you about age-friendly cities initiative. Age-friendly cities gives its residents a feeling of optimism, a feeling that this is the age-friendly city San Bruno they want to live in. Because age-friendly cities have improved core city services that support and enable residents to find what they need. A safe place to live in, with fair cost of living, access to healthcare, good roads, and various easy modes of transportation to downtown, to barrier-free public buildings and parks, and hopefully to our beautiful Crystal Springs Lake. These are the core city services that I'm now enjoying, and the reasons why tonight I call on this honorable body to help, to support and enable us to help make San Bruno an age-friendly city with a heart, so that I and all the other residents can live out our lives in good health, peace, and security. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jennifer Blanco.
Good evening, city council members and members of the community who are here tonight and who are watching at home. Excuse me. This may or may not be connected to the topic that's on right now, but I was at an event the other night, and I don't know if everyone knows here, but the county board of supervisors today approved an ordinance to criminalize homelessness. And at the event I attended, they spoke that homelessness is the number-one focus that's really affecting is our senior citizens, population. So I'm just wondering if now that that ordinance is going to be put in place moving forward, I'd like to know how we, as a community, are going to try to do the best to not criminalize our homeless population, especially if it's directed towards our senior citizens, members. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I have no other speaker cards.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for any comments and/or action.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to apply for the ARP age-friendly cities and communities designation.
Motion, Hamilton, second, and Marty Medina. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you. And thank you very much, both to, Roy, thank you for being here, and Damian, thank you very much for all the work. And thank you to those in the committees and for the work that you've done. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on, and we're going to take items, because we have the same presenters, so we're going to take B and C, and if you could read them both, and we'll do it as one, please.
Item B is consider approving a capital improvement program pilot project prioritization for fiscal year 2024 to '25 budget process. And item C is consider approval of the fiscal year 2024, excuse me, 2024 to '25 budget process.
Okay, let's take a recess, please. The city council? And we're going to turn it over to the CFO for his presentations, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. There we go. That mic's always on. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Medina and council. My name is Nick Pagaros. I'm the city's chief financial officer, and I have two items, presentations for you this evening, both strongly correlated with the work that we will commence at the retreat and on the budget in the next several months. The first item before you, item 8B, is a request for city council to adopt a CIP, or to give staff the direction of approving a CIP prioritization pilot project. As the council has already commented, we have a number of priorities that are adopted by, both through the annual retreat, as well as the capital improvement program budget. For 2024-25, we have over 30 priorities and over 100 capital improvement program projects. The prioritization pilot project is, we're suggesting that we incorporate... Oh, there we go. We're suggesting that we go through the full life cycle of the capital improvement program project timeline, sorry, lots of P's there, which is a year-round iterative process that typically begins in the autumn, in the fall, October, through the early winter, through December, where staff is working to identify projects for the city council to consider as part of the upcoming budget cycle. When we get to the city council retreat in January, that's the opportunity to set the high-level financial priorities for the organization. Here, the feedback from staff on our anticipated finances, as well as this year, we're recommending that the council explore and consider a preview of the CIP budget in January, February. This year, it's February, too. In the March timeframe, we would meet with the city council to talk through, to work through the capital improvement program budget study session. At that meeting, the council would provide direction as to what to include or not to include in the CIP for the upcoming year. And then we go clearly to June, where both the operating and the capital budget are approved. The cycle starts again and just continues to go. So for, as mentioned in the staff report, for 24-25, we are asking for the council to give us the green light to incorporate a prioritization framework that touches on several items that are listed in the staff report and are slowly coming on the screen here. One of the elements of this prioritization process, these are not listed in any particular order, they're listed in a combination of sort of our past practice, as well as what we have, what we've seen in other agencies when they go through a similar prioritization process. I do, however, want to highlight the first item, equity, which is something that is part of our adopted housing element program, area goals 4J, to explore the, to prioritize capital improvement programs in the areas of San Bruno with the, that have the most disadvantaged and vulnerable residents, and incorporating that into the decision-making process. You'll see here, health and safety issues, the asset condition or level quality of service. We can go through these in questions, if you have any specifically. In addition, there are several other priorities ending with shovel-ready, shovel readiness. So what we're seeking from you this evening is your support for us using this particular priority prioritization framework. How this will materialize is that as part of the budget process, we will give you our initial pass using this criteria. There is a significant amount of staff time involved with doing this in preparation for the March study session, so we want to make certain that the council is supportive of that effort. The second item is Agenda Item 8C. I do not have a presentation for this particular item. The calendar is included in the staff report, starts with, again, I feel like a broken record, the council retreat that's coming up, the objectives that we have for that particular meeting, which is to, again, look at the CIP, the CIB program, identify prioritization within the list. So it's different from this prioritization process, this really speaks to what the city council would like staff to focus on in the coming year, and we already, there were already some comments on that particular topic. Out of... Out of the retreat, out of the retreat, we will come to council in February to adopt those priorities, as well as budget principles. We're scheduled to meet with the Measure G committee on the 15th to make our presentation to them for use of Measure G funds, for their recommendation to council of Measure G funds. And then there are a series of other items that are included with really touch points every, almost every month with the city council to build the budget, because the budget generally does not happen in a couple meetings. It happens in, through a number of sequential building blocks that we'd like to focus on starting at the retreat. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentations. We were asking about using this type of framework that has been presented to us. Any comments or feedback from council at this point?
I have no, I don't have any questions. It's pretty clear. I just have a comment. This, you know, in previous years, receiving the budget, we would just kind of, you know, receive the budget, and, you know, these are the things that we're going to work on. And this, so this is kind of seeing how the sausage is made, but in a good way, seeing how staff comes to the conclusion that, you know, these are the, of all these, because we all, as we all know, we have way too many things that all need to get done, and we can't do them all at once, and understanding the reasoning behind why we should, why this one needs to come before this one, and why these are the ones we're going to focus on in this year. I applaud this, and I am absolutely in support.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember, I'm sorry, councilmember Salazar, then councilmember Medina, please. I mean, vice mayor. I'm sorry.
So Nick, thank you for bringing this forward. I think this is definitely a departure from what we've seen in the past, where I don't think we've ever really categorized the projects. They just kind of all get thrown out there, and we don't have this. My comment on the process, though, is that I feel like maybe having 10 categories is too many. And typically, what I've seen in this type of scoring thing, it would be probably half that many. And I think that will not only make it easier for staff to do that first pass, but it'll also make it easier when we review these later to sort of understand and not have to dig into too many details, and so that, you know, if there's some discussion about changing the priority, then it's fewer categories to look at. The other thing I would suggest that we include is a weighting on the different categories, because not all these categories are equal, in my mind. And if, I think that if there are things, for example, that are required, things that we have to do because of new regulations, or, you know, just because, you know, they rise to that level of urgency, I think that those should be given a heavier weight than the other, you know, items that are probably more nice-to-haves. So if we could make those two changes, I think that would be, that would make this process a lot more fluid. And I don't know if you're looking for a framework today that you can start working on. I know that we have a timeline to stick to, but I really think that this is going to be really cumbersome to get through if we keep all 10.
Did you want to get more questions from the colleagues? Okay, councilmember Medina, then councilmember Alvarez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I like it. I think this is definitely different. There's more thought to, why are we doing this project? I hear Vice Mayor Salazar's concerns, and I'm looking forward to your response. I think this is more, I would guess, of checking boxes to make sure it aligns. I think other cities do something similar. On Peninsula Clean Energy, we have a number of, for everything that we vote on, we go through our strategic plan to make sure that they align. So I look forward to your response. My question, though, is separate, and because we have this new requirement with the housing element, and I had to look it up again, because I always forget, it's the California Department of Housing and Development that told us, as we're turning it in, that we need to address the issue of the disadvantaged communities on our east side of town. I'm very concerned about that. I appreciate that now we'll be looking at it, projects through that lens, that the state is telling us we need to do better. So my understanding of it is that as we turn in our housing element each year, just to kind of check in of the report to determine the progress, and in that report, it'll show what we're doing, and that gets reviewed. So I just want to make sure that you could share with us of the process of the housing element and how it gets reviewed, and to make sure that we are making these targets. So that's kind of my, that's my question. So thank you.
Let's go to Councilman Alvarez. Do you have some, and then CFO can take them all at once.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I like the process, and I support this. I'm also looking forward to your response to councilmember Salazar's request.
And just before you, now that you have, now that you have all of those questions coming, I did want to say, some time ago, with the former city manager, former finance director, came forward to be a little more streamlined, innovative, and that was to change kind of the budget process, so that it didn't, wasn't so arduous on staff and saved time and resources. So I also like that we're trying to have kind of an early framework to try to figure out, okay, we can throw anything out, but at the same time, what is, what are you evaluating? How are you being given that direction, so you have that time to focus on that? So I appreciate that as well. And with that, we'll turn it over to you for all the answers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to the first question of the number of prior, the number of criteria prioritization factors, some of them are binary. There are, like, for example, external resource funding. It's either available or it isn't, is, so that might, you know, some of these priorities or criteria factor may be yes or no answers, as opposed to more in-depth analysis of whether, you know, does this project achieve the stated goal of the equity prioritization factor? With that, what I'm hoping to, what I'd like to suggest is that this is new to staff as well, and this is intended to be a pilot project, so that we can go through the process, understand what obstacles or challenges we may encounter, and then refine this process in future years. And so what I would ask is that, if, is that the council, if there are some areas on here that you'd like for us not to include, if you could sort of identify those, but otherwise, keep the list as is, acknowledging that some are simply yes or no answers in the evaluation. With respect to weighting, the, each priority or each prioritization factor, of course, that's something that we will work through and identify and work with council. I think the first piece or the big challenge here is to do that first initial evaluation and see what the outcome is, and then refine it as we move forward, which is why we're terming it as a pilot project. The second question is the housing element reporting. Not my area of expertise, however, this specific, this specific program, 4J, is something that I expect the community development director will ask me, you know, to provide a narrative, how have we implemented this particular project? And this, what we're doing tonight is the first step, is that we're starting a pilot project, we're looking at how we're prioritizing our CIP funds, and it will be a multi-year, multi, sort of, a progressive effort, as opposed to something that is just one and done. I expect that this is of such complexity that it'll take us a few years to refine.
Thank you for your comments and answers. CFO asked us on the framework, there's items A through F, was there something that, as he asked, that should not be considered or we're uncomfortable with this time? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I don't know that I would want to call out any one of these. I was thinking perhaps some of them could be combined rather than completely eliminated, but I can see where perhaps something may not be shovel-ready and may not be funded, but still be a really high priority to us. And if all factors are considered equal, I mean, it's already, you know, coming in behind, so to speak, in the rankings, and so that's, I was wondering if there's just a better way to do it, but I'll concede that it's, you know, it's our first time out, and I'm willing to let you try and see how it works out, and maybe once, once we have some examples to look at, I can, I could maybe provide a little better direction.
Okay, and so with that, I don't know if we need a, an act, a motion. I don't know that we're asking for that. I think we're asking for consensus on this framework, with the exception, the vice mayor said maybe some of them can be combined together, because obviously, it's not just that, it's through J, which the last one was shovel-ready. Is that correct, CFO? Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I have one follow-up question.
Yeah, please.
So this is a guide. It doesn't, it's not a tally, the highest scoring one goes to the council and we have, but it's a guide. So I think perhaps with it being not an automatic, like, we, the council, this council or whatever council could decide, well, you know what, this is still more important, and we're moving with this CIP, but this is just kind of looking through a different lens on it. So just want to make sure that that's accurate.
City manager.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And councilmember Medina, you're right, this is really, we're trying to create some structure to this, to keep it from being so haphazard, because at times, when I look at what we're doing, I ask the question, why are we doing this? Where did this come from? I mean, why is this suddenly, not suddenly important, why was this important at a time when maybe it has fallen off the radar? So this is really trying to create structure to the process, council buy-in on an ongoing basis, because we don't want to surprise you at the end, and we want to be able to justify at least the staff's analysis, so that when we give it to you, you guys can say, okay, this is what we asked for, this was the framework. And at the very end of the day, the council can completely shift and pivot to another dreadful process, that we gave you something that went through some rigor. That's, I think that's the intent of what we're trying to do here. And I will say, when I brought our new CFO on, and I think when you guys brought me on, I did talk to you about changing our budget process, and these are the kinds of changes that he and I are in agreement on, that will probably produce a more understandable document for the council and probably for the public.
And I think we're all appreciative of that, and I think that's important for the community as well. And sometimes you get a big binder, and it's just, like, seems ominous. So I appreciate that, and hearing the consensus of the council, then maybe combining, or what, but this is the framework. And again, to councilmember Medina, it's not the absolute, it's a framework, it's a guide, that therefore you can come forward within the budget process.
Nick, I will offer that we can maybe get rid of one of them, because if you really limit your strategic initiatives this year, down to the number your city manager wants, it'll just automatically fall off the list.
Okay. So noted to see what comes.
Well said.
All right. With that, there is no action, but I think you have consensus and direction from the council, CFO. Okay. Let's move on to item nine, council committee report outs. Councilmember Hamilton.
Yeah, I have, just have one report out from, we had the regular meeting on January 18th of the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, where I serve on the Board of Directors. We elected our new chair and vice chair for both Bowska and our financing authority, which is an entity that exists in order to authorize any financing that may be needed for projects. There has been no needed action from this, from that body during my whole term so far on the board, but we still need to have it there, just in case. Director Tom Chambers and Director Louis Vella were elected as chair and vice chair, respectively, for both entities. From a water supply report, precipitation in the mountains has been very below average thus far, but is forecasted, the forecast precipitation, including what we're getting right now, is encouraging. Our reservoirs are at 93% total capacity coming out of last year, which is unheard of at this time of year, so that's great. Our board policy committee recommended small changes during our mid-year review of our 2023-24 work plan to reduce scope on three items. Unfortunately, to delete the grant support program for this year due to insufficient resources, that was something I had reported out on previously, as something we can possibly go after, but that's not going to happen this year. And two small increases to technical and legal resources for supporting the Tier Two Plan negotiations. All the details are available in the January agenda packet from Bowska. These recommendations were accepted unanimously. We discussed and provide guidance to CEO San Kula on preparing the 24-25 work plan and budget. We reviewed a list of short, medium, and long-term challenges faced by all of our cities that are member agencies between now and 2065. Full list is available in that agenda packet. I specifically asked how we can more explicitly call out the gap between our water projections and our plans and the RENA process, which utterly ignores water availability and future needs when allocating housing targets to our cities. That's my report out.
Thank you. Mine, really quick, the emergency services. The emergency services council met, and again, for some, technology is just incredible, and this is now a new system that they're utilizing. And so what it does is it projects. So you can actually run, let's say, a simulation of having to evacuate in the roads in actual real time, and what would be the methodologies to try to get the community out, and what road to take, and the congestion that it might have. Much more detailed, but it is a new technology that the county is now undertaking in order to try to better real time, and then have those scenarios to practice on what might need to be done and the resources. Some of the group wanted to try to also bring in the resources from the various communities, and what happens if we deplete them in a certain community. And that'll be it for me on that. Let's move on to item 10, comments from council members. Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for being here. A couple of things, the usual first is the easy one. The last Saturday of the month at the American Legion is the breakfast. It starts from 8:30 to 11:00. Adults are $12. For the children, it's six. It's a really good, it's a really good time, and I think it's a, it's a community-building event that supports the veterans in their, in their efforts to kind of keep, keep it going. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I wanted to continue to ask our community to use San Bruno Responds, the app, and perhaps a reminder from staff, or just finding, finding ways to remind our community that it's, it really is helpful. There were some comments on Facebook today about how somebody reported a pothole, and it's like, well, it got fixed, you know, it got fixed the next day, but it's not going to be always the next day, but it's the way to let our staff know what's going on. So those are the easier things to talk about. The last thing is, is more difficult. So I've been asked by dozens of residents about the council's two-two vote, to agendize the peace resolution. And the question is, well, what happens now? Or why don't I bring a resolution forward? Well, it really doesn't, would make sense for me to bring a resolution forward and put everybody through the trouble if we don't have knowledge of the third vote. So I checked with the city attorney, it is my understanding, there are two ways for this to move forward to another vote to agendize. One, councilmember Alvarez and/or Mayor Medina would need to request the item to be agendized based on their interest to change their vote. That's one. Two, councilmember Salazar could express his support for the resolution, and I cannot ask him privately, due to Brown Act concerns of, hey, Vice Mayor Salazar, what do you think? I'm not allowed to do that. So it basically comes down to those two things. So I hope that clarifies where we're at right now, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And then if I, I'm going to go, and then councilmember Hamilton, and then councilmember Vice Mayor Salazar. I'm sorry. Two items, and one is just, I attended today, it was in the city of Millbrae, the superintendent Two items, and one is just, I attended today, it was in the city of Milbrae, the superintendent for the Seminole Union High School District convened his second, his, excuse me, we're still conducting, we're still conducting business, please. The superintendent brought the group together that did in September, and this was, he calls it "let's talk," and this was the social economical disadvantaged in the community, looking at the stats from absenteeism, suspension rate, where it is within our different school districts, and where, where it is in the communities, and again, how we're all linked together on that. What was great is it had not only law enforcement, it had electeds both from the school districts, city council, it also had the person who runs, Tim, over at the church on Sneeth Lane that helps out this community, he was there at our table. And again, it was just to show, if the absentee rate for students is at 15%, that the multilingual student is maybe at like 33%, the Pacific Islanders, the Latin students, and that was just trying to bring it to our attention, and how, again, to improve the system within our school and within all the communities, not just here, but throughout the, the county. The second thing I'd like, city clerk? City clerk, can you put up the photo? The second thing is I wanted to acknowledge that on the café report that we had about folks that are turning 100, as you see this gentleman, he just likes to be called Alfred, he came a couple Fridays ago, and he was celebrating his 101st birthday, resident of the city of San Bruno, and as you can tell, the only thing he needs is a cane, and he's amazing. As somebody read his bio at the center where he comes all the time, lives again, like I said, in town, not only did he once own Iron Gate in Belmont, not only was he married 72 years, but he is a World War II veteran who was in Normandy. So, and so, let's give respect, please, so to, to, to have Alfred, I want to, I think on behalf of all of us, wish him a happy birthday, and incredible, and it was an honor, and I think everybody who speaks with him would be amazed. So with that, then we're going to go ahead and go to Councilmember Hamilton, please. We're not done with the meeting yet. Councilmember Hamilton?
So I have one item, the, the monthly food distribution of Second Harvest Food Distribution at Bel Air School is tomorrow, so if you or someone you know in the community is in need of, of food, you can be signed up on the spot, it is not necessary to have already signed up, you can sign you up on the spot. We typically serve well over 300 families every month at this event. It'll be at 2 o'clock tomorrow afternoon at Bel Air School in the parking lot. We are also always in need of volunteers, so if you're, if you are available and able-bodied and wish to help your community, we can certainly use you. You could show up between 1:30 and 1:45 in the parking lot at Bel Air, and we will put you to work, it is very rewarding, and that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, and Vice Mayor Salazar.
Thank you.
Folks, please.
All right, let them say their piece. So I don't have a written statement. There are a few things I did want to say, though. I know a lot of people that are here tonight feel that they are not being heard. And I just want to, I want to state that just because certain actions weren't taken, certain, everybody had different reasons for voting the way they did, but, and I've heard some very negative things today, which is very disappointing to me, because in the meetings that I had, there was a very different energy, and I understand the disappointment, and I understand the hurt, but at the same time, I feel that as a community, the way that we will stick together is by keeping the communication going. When I met with the community, I offered some suggestions on some possibilities, on, on language, on things that we could work on together, that I felt could come back to the council and receive universal support, and at, at the time, I don't think that was well-received, there were, there was a different expectation on what should happen.
Please.
I, I remain committed to working with the community.
About gaslighting. 13,000 children are dead. Will talk to us about language.
Please, please have to. Folks?
You genocide apologist.
Folks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop the meeting, and then if, let's give the, okay, okay. Do you want to keep going or end it? So, sir?
What are you giving?
All right, with that, we're in, and we're going to adjourn the meeting to the next regular meeting, February 13th at 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.